Good evening, I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise and join us in the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome to those joiners in the audience this evening and those of you at home. Get right to item number two, minutes February 25th, 2013, regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February 25th, 2013, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion to second for discussion. I have one issue under, if I can find it now. It'll be under all the new business under my comments. Page six of the document. Where it reads regular Tuesday meetings with the secondary school building committee and now being held at 6:30 instead of 5:30. It should read, "The last meeting of the month is held at 6:30." All other meetings are at 5:30 and they're always Tuesday evenings. So, the only chance should be the last meeting of the month is at 6:30. Anyone else? Michael, did you have something?
I did, I'm sorry. I'm trying to find it, one second. It's the 25th, right?
Yeah, correct, regular session.
There was something here.
Don't worry about it, it's obviously not that important, right?
Okay.
Any others amended?
As amended.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the February 25th, 2013, regular session minutes as amended.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. February 25th, 2013, executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February 25th, 2013, executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Moving on to the March 4th, 2013, regular session minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 4th, 2013, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none? Oh.
I said no.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. March 4th, 2013, executive session minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 4th, 2013, executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Unanimous. And the March 9th, 2013, budget hearing minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 9th, 2013, budget hearing minutes as written.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Legal bills for February 2013.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for February 2013, the amount as follows. Copman and Page, $5,178.41. Copman and Page Labor, $702. West, $436.56 cents, for a total of $6,316.97.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Is there anyone here for public comment? Mr. Yule, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jeff Yule, 427 Park Street. Good to see you again. Just have an idea I want to share with you. I had, you know, we just had a special town meeting in which an important decision was made by the community. And I, as a result of that meeting, I had written a letter to the, both the transcript and the, and patch, to both editors. And I sent you all a copy. As far as I know, some have come back and said that you did receive it and hopefully you did have a chance to read it. My purpose of the letter was that there were a couple things, a number of things that in the letter that I talked about was the ballot voting at the special town meeting, the systemic problem with the MSBA and other government agencies and the repeal of the prevailing wage law. But today, my purpose really is to concentrate on special town meeting and the ballot vote. My reason is that, as I said in my letter, that special town meeting is about a special idea, creating a special interest. And most of the people that go to the special town meeting go for that, that purpose. Unfortunately, it does create a, an environment of intimidation sometimes just by the numbers. Sometimes, some people look at others the other way, in a certain way, that it intimidates people. And many people do not come to the meeting because they know it's a special interest and they just put up their hands and they say, "Well, why not?" I don't think, you know, in the case of this last meeting, there's any reason for anybody to think that. But sometimes the feeling's just there. And it's a concern that I've observed when I have sat on, as a board of selectmen, I've observed it when I have sat with the citizens of North Reading. There have been past meetings, special town meetings where very contentious. And it takes for some people who are not quite as brave to stand up and say, "We want a ballot vote," or, "I'm against this," you know. It is a huge intimidating process. I must say that I think this is the first time, though, I experienced a ballot vote. I don't know if any of you have since in the time that you've been here, but this is the first one that I, I really remember that we did that. And I must say that Mrs. Stats did a super job. I mean, it took all of about 45 minutes for her to tally everything up and give us the results. So, I think she should be recognized for her, not only her efficiency, but for her effectiveness when she, when she manages a town meeting. I think that what I'm looking to accomplish, I'm hoping that you will at least begin a dialogue on this issue, is to, like we did with changing the town meeting from April to June, consider reviewing the bylaw and see if we can change it that the standard vote process would be a ballot vote only for special town meeting. I'm not talking about the town meeting that we normally have, but for special town meeting, that it just be a standard ballot vote. So, no, when someone comes to the meeting and they're too intimidated or, too shy to get up and say what they think or what have you, that they can at least put their decision in a ballot box and know that it's going to be counted and they don't have to worry about anybody looking at them in an odd way or how do they, you know, "Oh, I'm surprised so-and-so did this," or "Voted that way," or "Stood up that way." I want it to be, to be as clean as possible. One of the responses in, to my letter was, I'm not going to mention the individual's name, but I'm going to quote him. And he said, "I have to admit that I was grumbling along with everyone else about the paper ballot, mostly because of the time involved. But one thing I will always get behind is unfettered, uninfluenced access to the ballot. And if even if one or two people feel uncomfortable in that situation, then I agree, we should always use the paper ballot." And I think that's the essence of what I'm suggesting, that, that the board do. And I'd like to have some type of commitment from the board, that they will at least begin to open that discussion and move forward with making the voting process as clean and as pure as we possibly can. So, I thank you for, you know, letting me speak. I would like your thoughts back about it. I don't know if anybody has a feeling on that.
Thank you, Mr. Yule.
Aye.
Mr. Prisco there, Mr. O'Leary, then we'll go from there.
You.
Mr. Yule, I appreciate your comments and it was the first time I've ever have gone through it. But I wouldn't be in favor of making a bylaw change to do that for special town meetings. If you remember last year, last June, I believe it was last June town meeting, we had to scurry around because we didn't have enough people to show up on time to hold the special town meeting portion. We had, I think, five articles. Then this June town meeting, June 3rd coming up, we have six articles. And, you know, if we have to do a paper ballot on all six of those articles, I think that would be a very challenging evening and I don't think we'd be there, we would never get it done all in one night.
We have a special town meeting?
We, we.
It's not even special. Right, there is, typically every June.
Every June, we have a, we have a.
Part of the annual is a special, the first portion is a special, last, Mr. Prisco's right, you need 150 people in the audience, registered voters, in order to conduct the special town meeting. We were unable to do so last year because we did not have 150 people.
And I think if we took on what you're saying, I think we'd have less people actually show up. I like the fact that, you know, people have the option. They can come to town meeting and if they want to, they can, you know, ask, be recognized by the moderator and request to go through the process. That always will stand. So, I think what you're saying, we can already do, I don't think we necessarily have to have an entire bylaw change and charter change to do that. Because I think it would actually cause a great, a larger problem for us, especially in this case. We have six articles coming up and all six to do a ballot vote would be very difficult.
Six, you have six items, articles I should say?
Yeah, it's very similar to what we've done when you were here, the three years you were here.
Yeah.
You know, it's really nothing different. That's all I wanted to say, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Leary?
I did read your letter. But I didn't, I didn't write back. But I don't think it's a good idea. Again, I understand the philosophy behind it and the desire to protect people from being intimidated and those sorts of issues that come about. But you can't, you can't avoid that, no matter where you, where you're at, whatever the issue's going to be. And again, special interest articles or special interest town meetings or whatever they are, however you want to quantify them, occur all the time. I mean, you can have a citizen's petition with 10 signatures on a, on a petition, can get an article on a warrant. And, you know, if, if we call for a special town meeting warrant, people can do that too. So, I mean, we would be literally there for days. And I think it would discourage attendance at town meeting. I, I think the hurdle that's there, 25 people standing, much like you did, who, again, you, maybe you were in favor of the, the project and maybe you were opposed to it, I think you stated publicly you were in favor of, of the proposal that was coming before town meeting, but you wanted to provide people an opportunity to vote on a secret ballot. And people have done that over the years. I've experienced a lot of these.
Well, I know, I know you have.
Yeah, so it's, you know, I did 11 and a half years as moderator here and, you know, three years down in Reading and I've seen a lot of paper ballots in my day. And again, there were more back then than there are now and our sessions were longer back then too. So, I, I think what we have in place is more than adequate to protect people's interests. But I think if we were to require a paper ballot on every article at a special town meeting, would be overly, overly cumbersome from an operational standpoint and in trying to get quorum, which is required, 150 people, and then try to get through the business. Regardless, and again, sometimes we put articles on, as someone just already pointed out, you know, which are pretty innocuous, you know, pay prior year bills or something which isn't controversial at all, on a special town meeting warrant article, in order to attend to the town's business and to require that to be subject to a paper ballot, which is going to take close to an hour every time you do it. Just get up, swish the badges out, check back in, get it all together, collect them, count them. It's just, and if we have a big crowd like we did the other night, it takes even longer. So, but it's going to take the better part of an hour on every single article. So, I, I don't think it will work from an operational standpoint. I understand your thought process, I appreciate it, but from a practical standpoint, I don't think it works and I don't think it would be serving in the best interest of the community as a whole in order to get the town's business done. So, and again, people are, and again, I think, and I've heard from some people who were at the meeting the other night, who were actually very comfortable with a paper ballot because, there is no ballot, because they actually did change their mind because they came with a neighbor or a friend who was on one side of the issue or the other and felt much more comfortable in voting their conscience and actually did switch. And felt comfortable about it and the neighbor or friend thought that they were with them and really they weren't. So, it does help people. But, you know, once in a while, we have to stand up and stand tall and raise our hand and vote your conscience and hope and pray that people don't take it too personally. So, I appreciate your, your comments, your efforts, your concern, but I, really from my vantage point, I don't see it working well for us.
So, would you say it's more of a matter of efficiency? Is that?
What's that?
It's more of a matter of efficiency than it is anything else? That it'd be, it wouldn't make the meeting efficient?
It would make it extremely inefficient.
Right.
Yes, extremely inefficient. And for the most part, most articles that come before even a special town meeting are not controversial, you know, with the exception of the last couple years when we've had some building projects. But other than that, we've had special town meetings before just in order to meet certain deadlines on certain issues because the state is mandating certain actions on the town's part, what we have to do. And as Mr. Delaney and Mr. Prisco pointed out, quite often, we have a special town meeting within, we start the regular town meeting, adjourn it, go to the special, then we'd have to go to a paper ballot on whatever the issue is. And for the most part, those are very innocuous issues, non-controversial.
Well, it's interesting because, Mike, in my notes, I, I was going to mention that meeting that we talked about and we were concerned because many times, we have to call people to come and, and I, you know, I, I'm on, I'm on the, the thought process that some of the reasons people don't call, one of the reasons people do not come is because they, they can't do a paper ballot. And, but that's just a different perspective.
I just think that there are more people who don't come because of the time constraints that they're under right now and they have other things tugging at them. And when it comes to prioritization, they don't even want to spend the three hours, three or four hours on a regularly scheduled town meeting to be there because the things are more important in their life. And if you're going to say, "We're going to do this and on every issue, we're going to take a paper ballot," it's going to take three nights. You're going to see fewer and fewer people.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time, I appreciate it. I just thought I would share my thoughts with you and.
I'd like to comment, Jeff.
Yes.
I've sat through a number of paper ballots. And by the way, kudos to Barbara because she's changed the process and this time was much more efficient and effective in the past the way it's been done. Putting that aside though, as Steve has said, there's a lot of items that we've had special town meetings for that were not contentious and just needed some action for town meeting. And therefore, why tie people up for that length of time? You know, one observation I had at that meeting was when the, the meeting voted not to allow the building committee to make a presentation wasn't because they were against the project, which I thought initially, but rather they just wanted to get it over with and go home. When there have been contentious meetings in the past, whether they be special or regular, people aren't shy about getting up and asking for a paper ballot. And 25 people in a meeting for a paper ballot, a special town meeting, by the way, there's going to be 150 people before any action is taken. If it's contentious and people want to get up and there's 20 people, you know, and I looked around and I needed another five, I think members of the board of selectmen will get up and say, "You know what? It's time for really, this is one that would be best served with a special, you know, a paper ballot." So, I think the mechanism's in place to do what needs to be done. It was put there by people that thought about this a long time ago when they put the charter together and it's worked. And I think that to tie up an hour on a paper ballot for something that is just a routine matter that happens to have been placed on a special town meeting ballot for whatever reason is, it's unnecessary.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Moving right along, item five, meeting with the Fourth of July Committee, update. Mr. Vino, good evening, nice to see you.
Joe Vino, 11 Rock Street. I'm here with my committee chairman, John Magazoo, and our treasurer, Ann Valade. We just want to give you a quick update on where we are and where we're hoping to be headed. We're going to do the Fourth of July celebration. The fireworks will be on the Fourth and we're looking to do a carnival on the Fourth, Fifth and Sixth. I did meet with Mr. Barry Konis yesterday. I got all the necessary permit applications. We are actually having a meeting tomorrow night and we'll get this process started and get these permits in post haste so that we can go through the, shall I say, the new procedure we're going to use. According to Mr. Barry Konis, it's going to be treated like a special license, going to go around to all the department heads, so nobody is left out of the loop. Not, not that they were the last year, but this will have a better paper trail, is the way I understand it. So, if you have any questions of me or my, my chairman and my treasurer, I basically just wanted to give you an update and let you know where we are.
And you've picked the Fourth, Fifth and Sixth because it happens the Fourth is on a Thursday and.
Yeah, Fourth, Fifth, Sixth.
It's fit to have something going on in the weekend.
Mr. Prisco?
Mr. Vino, this may be an optimum opportunity for you to talk about your event that you're hosting this, is it next Friday or is it this coming week?
Okay, you know what? I'm going to let Ann speak on that because I was, I wasn't involved in setting that up. So, she's much more versed on that than I am. So. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vino.
Thank you, this Friday we're.
Could you come up to the mic?
I'm sorry. And the weather's going to be nice.
It's for the people who are watching on TV.
The vast audience at home.
Okay. This Friday, we are having a country music night at the Hillview, starts at seven. We have a live band, they're called the Herlen Brothers, they're out of Wakefield. They've toured quite a bit, they do a lot of the country concerts as a startup band. And it's going to be $20 in advance, 25 at the door, but I think we're going to, you know, whoever shows up at the door would love to welcome them in. And again, we're having great auction items and light refreshments. So, we're hoping that we get some people to show up at the door and step out with their boots on.
Before you walk away.
Yes.
Are there any other fundraising efforts that are ongoing? Are there ways that people could donate? I know last year, you had ways for people to donate, I believe it was online, with some of it.
That's right. There is still the option for people to make donations through our website, which is N.R. Bring Back the Fourth, that's the number four, T-H dot org. And we have been running some youth dances. We are trying to really focus on the event itself because we know this year with the carnival coming in, that's going to help with some fundraising itself. We are looking for people to help with the committee as far as that day goes. We need some more manpower to help with security, with some of the booths that we're having, set up, that type of thing. We will also be sending out a flyer throughout the community or an ad in the paper, we're working on that right now, letting people know what the efforts are, making them realize that this is 100% donations only. The town does not fund this. We, you know, worked very hard last year to raise the funds, to put on the event that we had. We're doing the same this year. So, you know, we're really looking to the community. If this is something the community wants, the community needs to help us out. Because without the funding, it's not going to happen.
I thank you for your efforts. I'm glad you didn't get discouraged as a result of what happened through Mother Nature last year. I think you made the great decision just postponing it all until this coming Fourth of July and so I appreciate your efforts.
Any other questions?
Mr. Ford?
No, I just want to reiterate what the chairman said. I commend all of you for, for moving forward with it. I know last year was kind of a, you know, an unfortunate incident, but, you know, I moved into town 10 years ago, first thing I did, I moved in in August, but I was here for the fir, you know, my first Fourth of July celebration and my daughter was five and it was, it was something that, you know, was special to us. So, I just want to thank you all for continuing and it's a great effort.
Thank you. Mr. Prisco?
Yeah, I just want to add a little bit to the event that you have coming up on Friday night. I, I went to high school with the Herlen Brothers, they're a great band. I've seen them several times and folks listening at home or people here tonight, of all ages, young and old, you will seriously love this band. For $20, it's, it's truly a great event. I, you couldn't have picked a better band to come in and play for you. I, I can't say enough about them, I think you did a great thing. I am feeling bad for you though, I have to say, I could not believe, was it March 8th? I think you had originally scheduled.
I know, Mother Nature does not like the Fourth of July committee.
But it looks like right now, it's going to be in the 50s and sunny, so. Should be all good to go.
Out of this snow, Joe.
So, please, I hope the folks at home really come out. The town really needs us. I think it's a great opportunity. We, we've had a challenging several months around town. It'd be really nice to use this Fourth of July as an opportunity to kind of bring the town back together and, you know, have a nice social event where we can talk about family and fun and not talk about schools and budgets and all these other things.
Exactly.
So, thank you for your efforts.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
You have luck. Thanks.
Item six, sign warrants for both the annual town election, April 30th, 2013, and the special state primary, Senator and Congress, April 30th, 2013.
Mr. Chairman, I move to sign the April 30th, 2013, annual town election warrant.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I thought you were going upstairs.
Was there a?
No, this is, this is assigned, the warrant.
Oh, there it is.
Mr. Chairman, I move to sign the April 30th, 2013, special state primary warrant.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. It's a good pen, yeah.
It's a pen.
No, no, it's the other one.
Listen, don't steal it, you put home and watch it.
Mr. Hixton, you come up probably to this table here. Welcome. We'll move on to our 7:30 agenda items, meeting when our auditors review FY 2013 financials. Mr. Hixton's here. Welcome, nice to see you again.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you. You too.
Welcome. Ready?
Sure. I'm sorry.
Would you like to start with providing an overview?
Sure. If that's what you like, I'll do it any way you want.
And then we can go questions at that point.
Okay. First, thank you again for letting us do the audit again, but as I talk, I think these work much better if it's a conversation instead of a presentation, so if I say anything that you wanna jump in on, feel free to, so I won't mind at all. I'd like to start by saying that the town's financial controls are still very strong and very sound. Reconciling procedures are performed on a timely basis every month for all your bank accounts. All cash is reconciled to the, from the treasurer's records to the accounting. All accounts receivable are reconciled on a monthly basis. Budget versus actual expenditure and revenue reports are run and monitored, so you have a very strong system of internal controls over your finances. Doesn't mean you always have a lot of money, but it means that what you have is being watched over good by your finance team. Currently, the accounts receivable reconciliation process is very cumbersome and time-consuming because there's a lot of manual efforts required. Once you get the munis collectives package set up and installed, fully implemented, that will relieve the accounting office of a lot of manual efforts that we'll use as time elsewhere. A strong system of control like this just doesn't happen accidentally. It's because management has placed an emphasis on it and gotten good people, and so Greg's assembled a very good finance team, a strong finance team throughout the whole finance office. So, therefore, my management letter, which typically is internal control related, doesn't have much internal control. I think it's more informative and things that are changing in government, so we always find something to write about. That's what we have to do. So, the first comment has to do with snow and ice. The snow and ice budget is atypical for most government budgets because it can be overdrawn, legally overdrawn. In the past, the Division of Local Services really didn't provide much guidance on what they considered an appropriate charge to the snow and ice account. It's kind of funny that in 2012, when there was almost no snow, that that's when they became, issued their guidance, but that's precisely why they did. They couldn't understand why there was no snow and many, many overdrawn appropriations being raised on the recap sheet. So, and some, over a million dollars, well over a million dollars in some municipalities. So, they went out and began to look at some sample communities and found that there was a variety of charges being made to snow and ice accounts, including a municipality that just charged a percentage of their DPW budget to the snow and ice regardless of whether it snowed or not, so it had a, that was one of the ones that had a million dollar deficit when there was no snow. So, at the end of 2012, with their year-end letter, they sent out guidance on what they considered appropriate snow and ice, and they're very sensitive to the fact that it's because it's not subject to appropriation, and so they, it would let, they don't want to let you just move expenditures into there and not have the taxpayers have to vote on the appropriation. So, I, in the letter, I quoted what they consider to be appropriate charges, but for the most part, they just can, they think it's overtime for DPW workers as a result of snow and ice, salt and sand, and plows and drivers. Anything that's regular and ordinary that happens that you can measure, they think should be funded in the DPW budget and not charged as a, beyond the appropriation process. So, my recommendation is just that you review your policies related to the snow and ice, including your budgeting, because if you can't charge it to snow and ice and you typically charged it to snow and ice before, it means you have to do something to the DPW budget. That doesn't mean that you have to just increase this line item, the DPW's budget, and if they don't spend it for snow and ice, they can spend it for anything, because you could set up a line item in your own DPW budget that's snow and ice, so that if it doesn't snow that year, the DPW department just doesn't get extra money. So, I mean, you can still have your regular, it would be like snow and ice maintenance or snow and ice repairs, or you can just put it into the regular operational budget. The DLS, I've had conversations with them...
Can you stop me there?
Yep.
I wanna get an understanding of that. Thanks. So, you're saying we can have a snow and ice budget?
Well, you have your regular...
Right. Okay. And then you're saying we could have another line item within the DPW regular budget that's snow and ice?
Yeah. Snow and ice repairs or maintenance, if you, for vehicles or if you're buying equipment, you could have it for plows and that type of things, if you're buying plows.
But that would be out of the category that you couldn't use your regular snow and ice budget for, is that what you're saying?
Right. Right. Something that doesn't, does not meet the DLS version of the snow and ice budget that can be overdrawn.
Mr. Fode?
Correct reform. My understanding is you can't buy new equipment with, in your snow and ice budget unless it's budgeted for that, but as far as a snow event, anything that's associated with that snow event, whether it be gas, salt, all that can be...
Yes, that's all, that's all legal, like, but you can't repair trucks in the off-season. That, I'll tell you, that's one of the, ordinary maintenance.
Right, we're on the same page here. You can repair a truck during this...
Yeah, yeah. As a matter of fact, the first, the DLS at first said repairing a truck outside, is outside the snow and ice budget, but then when push came, when they started talking about it, they started saying, well, my first discussion with them was about repairs, and that's what they said. Well, if you repair it in the winter, it's okay. If you repair it in the summer, it's not. So, I really, they didn't have any guidance and anything else, so, but that is where they ended up when they issued their guidance, that it's still the same repair, but if it's preventative repair, then it's ordinary maintenance. If it breaks down in the middle of a snowstorm...
And I think that's debatable, given the fact that if you're using strictly, a truck for strictly snow purposes...
Yep.
...which we do in North Reading.
Yeah.
We have trucks that are designated for snow only. I think that could be, that could be...
Right. Yeah.
You know, 'cause it's not, it's not being driven in the summer to haul dirt.
But their, but their take on it is that you could still appropriate that in your normal DPW budget because, I mean, it's not, it's not, fixing a truck in the snow and ice circumvent, not circumvent, legally going through the, beyond the appropriation process, and they don't want you to go beyond the appropriation process.
Dick, what's the, what's the rationale behind, you know, not allowing us to spend any less? I mean, one of the reasons the community's under budget is because once you raise the limit on it, you're stuck there.
Yeah.
What's the rationale behind that? Do you know?
Well, I think that...
And why hasn't it been changed over the years, you know?
I can't tell you why it hasn't changed, but I think that they don't want people to reduce their snow and ice budget, continually reduce it, and then just say, oh, I can raise that on a recap sheet, you know, like, like next year, say somebody had a million dollars in their snow and ice this year, and they drop it down to 750 to let them spend it on something else, and then they'll just raise that deficit, a larger deficit, the next year on the recap sheet. Just pushes more expenses off into the future.
Mr. Ms. Herring?
Just to follow up on that, and then I have another question. But when you do that, when you let it go into next year, then you have, you know, you have less to spend the following year.
Right.
So, you know, I think the communities have incentives...
Right.
...to keep away from that.
Well, I think that this is one that they think they're protecting, protecting you from yourself. That's what I think they think they're doing, you know?
So, the other thing is, so what I think I heard you say is that you've got DPW working their normal workday on a work week, right? And if it's a snow event and they're out driving the snowplow instead of doing something else, that's not a snow and ice charge. Is that what I heard you say?
That's my understanding on it, yeah. I mean, if they're, until it's, they're on overtime or something...
Until they're on overtime or a weekend.
Yeah.
Fortunately, unfortunately, all the snowstorms...
It's on weekends.
Should be on the weekends.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's my understanding of it.
So, the idea is that, well, they're there, and rather than do what they might have been doing, they go plow snow.
Right.
And it should be part of the DPW budget until it gets to...
Until it gets to overtime, yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Fode?
No, actually, the other thing I wanted to comment on was that they're just forcing communities to keep it artificially low. No one's gonna increase their budget on snow and ice, and, you know, I know, you know, where I work in Chelsea, we haven't done it in 10 years.
Right.
Because there's no advantage.
Almost nobody does.
There's no advantage.
Almost nobody does. They just keep it, yeah, I mean, it's just, it pushes it, it just pushes, pushes it off one year, I mean, so if they...
Right, but it allows you to have that, the funds available for other things, not, not earmarked towards, strictly towards one function.
Right, right. It's a common, I mean, it's a common complaint with the DOR, but on their side, they just think that...
Well, let me just say it, I'm not complaining about DOR. It's taxes, and I'm not complaining at all. They're great people.
Me either. I have to submit all my audits to them. But on, but on their side, I really think that they're afraid that if you budgeted a million dollars and they'd let you just drop it to 700 or to 500, and that would give you 500 more to spend this year, then they're afraid that communities would just do that and then eat into next year's. I mean, you'd be hurting yourself, but...
But that's what everyone's doing now.
They're doing it anyway.
Well, but you can't drop your budget. You can't...
No, I know, but everyone's keeping it artificially low.
It's keeping it artificially low.
So, that's what most communities are doing anyhow.
Right, but I think they're in a loop now. They, that, they're at a point where if they said, okay, you can lower it, then people would lower it, and then they'd have even a bigger deficit.
Yeah, I think quite, I think quite the opposite. I think we'd be more, I think we'd be more inclined to budget more appropriately in hopes that we don't spend it all, which would allow for free cash to accumulate, but instead, what we're doing is we're, you know, rolling the dice, keeping it to a level where we know we're gonna spend it all.
Yeah.
Yes, but one thing we haven't done, Steve, is we've been...
I know what we've been doing.
Paying rather than letting it roll.
Right.
Right, you've been cleaning it out.
We've been very responsible, this board, but, you know, we have it for a number of years.
Yeah, you have been clearing it up before the end of fiscal year, for the most part.
Right, so, you know, so to me, we're...
Till this year.
Yeah. We're handling it responsibly, but, you know, I still think, from a budgetary standpoint, we're not being realistic.
Right.
We're just artificially, you know, putting a number up here that we know that we're going to meet...
Right.
And then hope to close the gap in other ways...
With free cash.
We have...
Before we close the year out, and if need be, then we go with the next year.
We have the increased...
Right, but it's still artificially low.
We've held back.
Right, but it's still artificially low.
Held back, huh?
Yeah. No, I agree. It's a, it's a common complaint, or not a complaint.
Observation.
Observation.
Yeah. And just in relation to our spending on it, you're not calling it to question as far as anything that's, the way that the economy's been handled to date?
Well, I think that there was, it was, it was still the same thing. There were some repairs in there that I think that...
I think there was stuff in August or September...
Yeah.
In terms of repairs.
Yeah, there were, there were repairs, but there was really no guidance up until this point, so, I mean, there was, there was debatable, but, I, I mean, I actually talked to the DOR about the specific incident and specific type of expenditures, and they, and they were, I asked them, is there some legislation or statute that you can point me to that I can say whether it's allowed or not? And, and I was talking to the assistant director, and he said, well, we don't like it if, but he couldn't point me. I said, well, do you like, I don't really, can't just tell somebody that you don't like it. I mean, is there some statute that, that, you know, would prevent it? And so...
It's Mr. Fode's point. I mean, we have some equipment that's just designated for snow and ice, you know, and, you know, to me, you know, we do defer maintenance to the slower season. I mean, unless it's, unless it breaks down, you know, in the middle of a storm, we're gonna address it immediately, otherwise, we're gonna put it off, set it aside, mothball it for a little bit, and we get to it, we get to it.
And sometimes you don't find it until, you know, until the next time you use it.
You know, as you're gearing up for the season and you're getting ready to go, you know, it might be September, October, and who knows? We had that October storm last year, which did a number on us. You, you know, so in the normal course of maintaining your equipment that's specifically earmarked for, for snow and ice, you're doing it in the off-season, and to say that those expenditures are not...
Well, I think they just want, want you to have to go through the appropriation process for those. I think that that's, that's their mind.
Well, give them some guidance and say, we'd like some ability to, to budget appropriately and not be held...
Yeah, I agree.
You have to artificially, you know...
I think that's a fair comment.
Yeah, I think that what it's forced us to do is, you know, we're under budget, and then as soon as the board select has to declare the emergency, a lot of citizens say, you know, how come you guys are on the budget?
How come you ran out of money already?
Your action was ridiculous because it was, we did it so early, we had less than 10 inches of snow.
Yeah, right.
People were really questioning.
Right, well, and that's what brought this whole thing to the DLS tension, is that...
So, then each year, we're explaining that, you know, because of the DOR's rules.
Right.
So, people are under the impression, a misimpression, you know, that we've blown the budget at an early stage when really we haven't.
Right.
And it's only because the DOR's didn't, doesn't like things, you know, that we do it. I guess we're through branding on that one.
You can get beyond snow and ice.
I was just the messenger.
That's what I wanna say.
The next comment has to do with the school building project. In June 2010, the town meeting authorized a million dollars for the school feasibility study. Subsequently, the town issued a blind anticipation note for the million dollars and set up expenditure account in a fund 5034 and began expending from that for the feasibility study. In the 2012 town meeting, there was the $107 million authorization for the, for the project, for the middle school, high school project, and those bond proceeds and the MSBA reimbursements are being accounted for in a different fund, 5038. So, I just, I'm just suggesting that, that you merge those two funds so that you can run budget versus actual reports on the project as a whole, instead of having to run a piece here and a piece out of the other fund. I mean, it's, it's all doable with the munis, but I just think it's better for the project managers to see all the expenditures in one place, and, and I think as time goes on, from a historical context, people will be able to just print out one report from one place and be able to see the activity related to the school building project.
Just a comment, the feasibility study is complete. Now, we may not have collected all the money from the state yet, that portion of reimbursement, but to me, that was a separate article that should be closed out, so why would you wanna combine the two?
Well, I think that, I think that this is a two-way thing, and this is my understanding. My understanding was that the $107 million project was all-inclusive, including the feasibility study, so...
Yeah, that's correct.
He's right.
You're right.
He's right.
Right, so, so this was the second part of the comment, was to move, to combine the, all the expenditures into one place and then rescind the million dollar loan authorization to the June 10 one, which will never be issued, really, because, because it's all...
All encompassed in that, both recent ones.
Plus, we borrowed money on bands, I would assume, for that, or maybe we didn't. I don't know what the cash flow might have been.
You did a ban on it, but you never, you never did a formal, you never did a bond, so you can just bond it.
Now I understand.
Yeah.
So, Greg, will we need a warrant article for that purpose?
Yes.
To rescind that?
Yes.
So, we should add that. Would that be the special town meeting?
I'll talk about that later on. We've received some good word from the DOR that the special that you alluded to earlier is not a legal requirement. It was an informal requirement of the DOR, and as Dick mentioned, when they were pressed[1708.15]
when they were pressed with the question in terms of what the legal basis of that was, they could not come up with any legal basis.
Oh, like snow and ice.
What's that, they, you have to break.
They require us to have a special, a special town meeting to deal with end-of-year business versus handling within our annual time.
Yeah, no, I know.
We have a form requirement, and we were unable to have our special town meeting last year.
Really?
Yes.
No, I, I have seen legal, um, opinions that says that you do not have to have it, but it's definitely easier for the auditors if you do.
Gee, Dick, thank you very much.
I don't think we'll be doing it anymore. Sorry to disappoint you. Mr. Frisco?
In regards to the feasibility study, was that reimbursed at a different rate than what we are getting for the entire school?
Same.
Same percentage?
I think so, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Mr. Keller, you're saying, he's my finance guy, I know him all the time, so I'm sure he's right. Thank you.
So that was it on, uh, so the combined and then we send it.
Dick, just as far as, you know, your recommendations here, sometimes we see management's response, sometimes we haven't for these.
Yeah.
Where are we at, Liz and Greg, in relation to the recommendations? Have you had a chance to go over them all and, um, either concur or shrug your shoulders or say, absolutely not, Dick, you're all wet?
Uh, yes, um, I met with Dick myself to review the financials in the management letter, and then Greg and I met with Dick as well, too. So we were in agreement on the management letter comment.
And we will, um, submit formal comments so that the board is aware of what they're.
And if you'd like to add those comments to this, and we can reissue this letter as a formal document, so you can have that on file, we'd be glad to do that, too.
I think it's usually a good idea.
Yeah, I agree. The next comment, uh, comment has to do with retirees' health insurance. Recently, the government, the governor has sent a, sent an act of legislation that will render some of this comment moot. However, the main thrust of it is that you're going to start to get some bills from other municipalities for retirees' health insurance. Because as, it's, uh, chapter thirty-two B, section nine A, uh, it was implemented in, uh, or adopted in two thousand and ten, but I think that just towns are just starting to get around to sending out bills. So if somebody works for you for ten years and worked, then goes to Linfield and works, works for them for ten years, and they're on their retirees' health insurance, they're going to start sending you a bill for your proportionate share of the retirees' health insurance. So you have, the legis, the legislation says that you have to receive the bill by January fifteenth for the prior fiscal year's premiums. So you could be getting bills from all kinds of different communities. So I, I think this is more just to, to let you know that, um, I wish I could tell you how much you have to put in your budget, but there's no historical data to tell you, tell you, uh, that. But on the other side, I think that you guys should start trying to look into some policies and procedures to do the same thing, to send out bills likewise, which is easier said than done, because.
You don't even know where those people are.
Right, so, I mean, if, if, if you step back, I mean, it, it, what, what entails is you looking at everybody that is on your retirees' health insurance, and then going, going to Middlesex and retirement system and seeing where they worked. And I, I think that Middlesex is, is going to be giving people that kind of data. But if, if someplace people could work the three different communities and are, and so, I mean, you'd, you'd have to send out bills to all these communities and have a receivable tracking system, and so it's a lot of, it's a lot of work. And, but I do think it's worth looking into and seeing, um, if, if you can find some way to do, to actually make it work efficiently and who you can get to do it, and that's on staff. I, I, I do think that maybe you want to make a minimum amount that you want to send a bill for. I, I, I was at a place that just got a bill for seventy-five dollars from a, from a town, and I'm, I, I'm sure it cost them more than seventy-five dollars to, to produce the bill. So, I mean, if somebody works twenty-seven years for you and one year for somebody else, I don't know if it's worth the effort to, to send a, the bill to a.
On the other hand, it's worth the effort of the other community to send us a bill.
Yeah, no, I, I really do think it's worth you looking into and making an effort to try to bill up communities, because I think that it's going to happen more and more.
Now, you, you hinted that this is going to be rescinded?
Um, no, you know what? What, what happened is, part of my comment had to do with, with percentages. And what, what was going on until the governor's bill, which, I'll mention something about that in a minute, um, is that cities and towns were saying, in, in the past, if you worked ten years for a municipal entity, you, you got retiree, you got retirees' health insurance. It didn't matter what, where you worked. In an effort to lower people, their, uh, other post-employment benefit liability, people, towns were saying, you have to work ten years for us, and not just ten years for a town. So if somebody worked nine years, if you had that in, and you worked nine years for you, and then they worked twenty years for somebody else, they couldn't bill you, because they weren't, they, you, they thought that they wouldn't be able to back bill you. And, and they didn't want somebody to come work for, work for another town for nine years, come work three years for, for them, and then they was responsible for the retirees' health insurance. Well, the, the governor's new legislation, in fact, I got a fact sheet, I didn't know if you guys had received yet, it's from Middlesex County. It's, what it's, what it's set out to do is, um, directly, it's directly attributable to, attributable to the retirees' health insurance liability, the OPEB liability. And, and what, what used to be the ten-year rule, you work any municipality for ten years or any state for ten years, is now going to be twenty years. And it's twenty years in order to get half the benefit. So if you pay seventy percent of retirees' health insurance, and somebody works twenty years for you, they will get fifty percent of that seventy percent. And they'll only get the whole seventy percent as it's, if they've worked thirty years. And so it's phased in in incremental increases up, up until you, to get it. So that is going to directly lower the retiree, your unfunded liability, because less people are going to be eligible. And, and, and when they are looking out, and when the actuary's looking out, they're going to say, they're going to make, um, calculations that show less people are, are going to be eligible. And they're, and they're going to be eligible for a lesser amount, because people with twenty years aren't going to get your whole benefit. So, um, there's a phase in for people, uh, who have been working for, um, already active, but, uh, it's, it's like, it's, so, I mean, people that have, are within five years of retirement, have to have at least twenty years to receive half the benefit. And people that are over sixty have to have over nine years to receive the benefit. So the phase in is not really beneficial to the employees, but, um, if it passes and, and it, I, if they sound like it's, it very well is going to pass and, and pass by July first, um, I think that the, the retirees' benefit is going to, is going to drop, your unfunded liability is going to drop considerably in your next actuary report.
Don't, don't raise our hopes, I, I don't, I don't believe it's going to.
You don't think it's going to pass?
I don't think it's going to pass, I don't think it's going to remain intact as, as presented. There may be some sort of aversion of it, but it's not going to be anywhere near what's been proposed.
Well, I, I was just talking to somebody who went to a meeting, um, with the, with the governor, with the unions, and they, and he said, I was surprised, he said that the unions were on board with it, too, and that it was going to, that it was going to fly, he thought, untouched. Really?
Not a chance.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So our finance director, this was there, have we begun to see any bills come in? We have. And we have, we haven't budgeted any amount in this category at all.
They just started this fiscal year. Who received it?
Just two.
Okay.
Have they been sending any out?
No.
It's a good follow-up question.
Have they come in by the deadline?
Uh, I believe they did.
Mr. Keller?
Just a question, are there any companies that are, that are entrepreneurial and have to get into the business of going in, doing the research and selling their, their services to students, towns, to?
Not to my knowledge, not yet, because this is such a new thing. I mean, it's only, I mean, even though the law was passed in two thousand and ten, I, I haven't seen one bill until two thousand and, in two thousand and twelve. So I, I'm sure that some people will eventually get involved in that, but.
You're looking to do something in your retirement?
No, I'm also. It seems to me that would be something that you would, you would obviously get all your money, because you have to pay them the fees and things.
Right. Right, yeah.
And again, anybody, any employee that also worked, not just for other communities, but for the state.
Right.
Because they're all part of the same retirement system.
Yeah.
Would, uh, so we can actually build a state?
I, I believe you can, yeah.
Interesting.
When it finally comes down to it, though, we're.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see if we get, see if the check clears.
Mr. Frisco?
So just to make sure I understand, you're saying, it's really, is it only when they work for us at one period of time, they stop and they go to work for another visitor?
Yes.
What about in the case when they're working for both at now? What if we have an employee that's working for the town of North Reading, and then at the same time has another job with another town?
Well, once, once they retire, they retire from one of the towns. And it, they, they have to, they pick a town, and usually they pick the town with the best benefit. So, so that depends. If you have the best benefits, you'll be get, then you'll be billing a town, somebody else, and if you don't, then you'll be getting a bill.
So even under that scenario, we.
Yeah, yeah.
Generally, they'd be, they'd be collecting the health insurance from the community with the best benefit package anyway.
Right.
And that's, and that's the.
Yeah.
Community they'd be retiring from. But I think what's going to happen is, is the retirement systems, retirement boards, it'd be Essex County, Middlesex County, all the retirement boards are going to have to be the, because what happens is, is when they retire, a certain portion is, is a portion to the communities that they work for already.
But the problem, I, I, that, a lot of people have thought, have wanted the retirement boards to get involved in this, in this, but, I mean, as far as I can see, that, they don't, they're pretty hand tough, because if every single city and town had the same benefit package, had the same rates, and had the same percentage splits, it'd be doable. But absent that, there, it's a quagmire for them to get involved with.
But I think what happens is, is there, there are chargebacks, like if you retire from the state and you work for a municipality, the state is going to charge back to that municipality a proportionate share of what the retirement benefit is.
Right, right.
For whatever the retirement benefit is, in relation to the employment of, the service of employment within that community.
Yeah.
So the ratio's already done in relation to the retirement benefit, cash benefit. It's already charged back.
That's, that's for the pension, yeah.
That's for the pension, for the regular pension. Those calculations are already done. So the proportionate share of health insurance benefits would be the same proportionate share.
Well, the problem is that if you, if you're, if you're a seventy percent community, and you're billing somebody, and so you paid seventy percent of the retirees' health insurance, and you're billing a community that's only a fifty percent share, they only have to pay you their proportion, their fifty percent share of it. So, you know, I'm, you know, it's math, and it's doable. It's just, I don't see, I don't see.
The other thing is, when people buy back time, you know, because they work for Parks and Recreation three months a year for four years, and when they pick up a year's worth of service.
Right.
That's charged back to a community if the person happened to go on and go to public service.
Right, through the pension assessment, right.
You know, so for, as far as a pension assessment. But they weren't eligible for benefits at that point in time. So I guess the question comes, uh, is the community on the hook if the, as a part-time employee, they weren't eligible for the benefits?
Yeah.
And the answer should be no. But, you know. So I, and again, I don't know how that, how the legislation is worded, whereby is that community with the small proportionate share of the pension requirement required will they pay into the health insurance portion of it if the employee was not eligible for those benefits at the time of employment?
Well, in my, in the comment, before, before this, um, state's, um, new legislation, which may or may not pass, it's, it's not an opt-in legislation, so it's, it's, you don't get to say, we, we want, it's going to be twenty years, and it's going to be thirty years, that's, if, if it passes. So that's what it's going to be. But, um, that was one of the questions I had before that, was if, if you had a, if you were a ten-year community, and somebody else was, and then they worked for you for nine years, and then they worked, you know, five years for somebody else, so they got the, the ten years in municipals, and they sent you a bill, it's, it says that the town should, the law, the language says that the town shall, shall be reimbursed for its proportionate share, but, and, and what, and it said based on the, like at my town's rate, the lower percentage rate, so, or based on the lower contribution rate. So I guess there could have been an argument that my contribution rate is zero, because you didn't meet my ten years, but that's not what the, the leg, the language, um, meant when, when they wrote it. The language when they wrote it was a percentage, because they didn't have any of these other restrictive clauses in, um, until just recently.
Well, I think, you know, the, the case of the two employees that were being charged back on, and we just have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. Liz, you know, you've got two that, that came in?
Yes.
You know, if, if those two employees, and again, I don't know who they were, but if they were only part-time employees and were not eligible for benefits when they were the employer of the town, I would say, let's try and make a case of it and not reimburse those other communities, because those employees were not eligible for the benefits when they were here. Had they been participating in the process, I mean, they may have been on their spouses at the time, who knows? But they may have been a part-time Parks and Rec kid, you know, so if we.
One of them, we're asking for dental insurance to be reimbursed, and we, it's a hundred percent employee paid, uh, here, so.
So we'd be more than happy to contribute as much as we do usual, which is zero. Yeah, which is zero.
I think that is addressed. I think that that one says, you know, it's based on your contribution rate, so I, I believe that your contribution rate, percentage rate, which is zero on that.
But they still are trying to, you know.
Well, that's what, that's, in the, one of the few places I've seen it happening right now, it's bills are going back and forth, because they're sending bills out for their rate, and then some of, they're sending, the, the towns sending it back, so we don't pay that rate, so they got to redo the rates. And so it's not just, I mean, you have to like know what the rate is of every town you, you are sending a bill to. And so it, it's, it's not an easy thing to set up, but I, I don't believe, but I think that if, I mean, I think you might find that there's some people that came here for two years and retired here, and it's worth sending a bill to the, the place that he worked the other, she worked the other twenty-five years, you know, you know, so.
Other post-employment benefits?
Uh, yep, the other post-employment benefits trust. Government Accounting Standards Board, um, established, had statement number forty-three, and that set up certain minimum criteria for OPEB reserves to be qualified as what they consider plan assets. And they have to be, those, if you have a OPEB trust, it has to be administered as trusts, they, the assets must be irrevocable, they have to be dedicated for properties, for retirees' health insurance, and they must be legally protected from creditors. When you adopted chapter thirty-two B, section twenty, the OPEB legislation, it, it, at that time, it didn't protect the assets from creditor, from, from creditors. Since then, I think it was at the end of two thousand and eleven or early in twelve, the legislature changed the language to make it so that you, it does, it is protected from creditors. But, um, it still doesn't really address whether it's irrevocable or really administered as a trust. So, and that's important, because if, if, you don't have much in there for plan assets right now anyhow, but if, if, as that grows, if, if your actuary just uses the, um, the strict language, which I think they're moving towards on what's considered a plan assets, and they don't consider the money that you have in there a plan asset, or, then they won't be able, they'll have to use a higher discount rate. Because when you have a, a plan, they can use an, an interest rate to, to, for your unf, calculating your unfunded liability for the type of investments that you can make within the plan. So you can invest in stocks and bonds and, and pretty much anything in, in that, in that, when you have a plan. But if not, then they have to say, well, just like the rest of the government, municipal government, you can invest in CDs or money market funds, so the discount rate that they'll use will drop. So anything you pick up from the, the, the OPEB, the governor's legislation in an unfunded liability, you lose in this. So there's a growing consensus among most of the CPAs and I think the actuaries, that you really should have a, a true trust fund document in order to have a, an OPEB trust document. The Mass Treasurers Association, in one of their last meetings, summer meetings last year, had a sample plan, that, a sample trust that they sent out, and I sent it to Liz tonight, I don't know, I, I don't know if I had sent it before, but I sent it tonight anyhow. And, and I think that you should look into it about establishing a, a true OPEB trust. And so that you don't fall into the possibility that your discount rate goes up just because somebody looks at it and says, well, technically, you don't meet one of the four criteria for a plan asset. And it's kind of a hot-button issue at, at some of the DOR, or DLS seminars, and there's been a couple, you know, it's a topic, and for the accounting seminars, we have to go to one of those continuing professional education credits. And they, you know, and it's, it's discussed, and it's like, how many of you are counting these Chapter 32B 20s, Section 20s as, as plan assets, and how many aren't? And there's a lot of people falling on both sides of it, and more people are kind of saying, well, it really isn't. So I, I think it's a good idea to look at it and consider establishing a, a true trust. There's also, as far as investments go, there's a, a state board that's, the, the health, the healthcare security trust board that can, you can opt into, to have them invest in and manage your OPEB trust funds. And, and that's with the state. Now, I don't know, I haven't looked into exact, a lot about them, except other than it, it's an option, and it, and it has the same kind of investment powers as PRIT and for the, for the pension funds. And so, and they can invest in realty trusts and things like that, that are of a, too big a, too big of an investment for somebody that's just investing small amounts of money, but you could become part of a, of a much bigger investment portfolio. So again, it's just, I think that as the OPEB trust fund grows, there's a lot of different things that you can look into as far as how to invest it.
So the two things I take away, we need to do, we need to adopt the new language of Chapter 32B.
Yeah.
And we should establish the trust document.
Yeah, yes.
Great, so it's another item for town meeting in terms of adopting the new language of the Mass General Law.
I think that if you do that, but, and the longer range plan is to, to look at the trust, because, um.
I don't think that has to, town meeting.
Yeah, no, I don't think that that has to be, yeah. But the, but, and then that, that first step will carry you over and probably get you through like accounting as a plan, plan asset until you, you get a trust document. That's it on the management ladder. I'll just jump into the financial for a minute. You have a clean opinion on your financial statements, and in the back of this, two, two reports, one on internal control and compliance with laws and regulations, and that was clean, and there's another one on federal grants, and our testing on the internal control over federal grants and the compliance with federal grant laws, and, and that was clean also. If I could just show you two quick pages, I don't know if you have it, because page seven has, has your fund balances and your free cashes over the last, last 10 years. And if you, about two-thirds of the way down is your free cash part, and it shows you that your free cash was about 1.8 in 2012, and the only time it's been higher over the past 10 years was, was 2008. So you're, you're in a healthy free cash position, and, and so I think that, you know, that's, that's a good barometer for, for measuring most Massachusetts cities and towns, they look at their free cash. And, and you've kept it in that million-dollar range, and that's pretty, like Moody's likes to see consistency, and, and you've consistently been over the million-dollar mark, so that's, that's, um.
In the board.
That's good financial position. And, and if you look at just on page 43, this is your budget versus actual report. And this is what generates your free cash. It, it shows what the original budget was, the final budget was, for revenues and expenses, and, and where you came in over budget, and, and the only one under, that's in a deficit is the highways and public worth, and that's a result of the snow and ice deficit. So about, down the very bottom of the page, it shows you that you have $1.8 million on the bottom right, and it's a result of revenues coming in over budget by 969, and expenditures coming in under budget of 850. So that's what generated your free cash for two, for 2012. So I guess, I guess, in conclusion, I think that the town's run very well, Greg and his staff do a good job, you know, managing the finances and to put you in a good position to, and town has put itself into a good position going to, financially going to the future.
Thank you very much. Would anyone have any additional questions or comments? No? Finance committee? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item eight, FY 2014 budget hearings, beginning with Youth Services. Ladies, welcome.
Can you give me the short version or the long version? The long version will all come up, and the short version will get up.
Well, who's speaking?
Dean Haugh.
Grab the microphone.
You should have got half of the microphone.
No, she's got to sit, have her sit.
As luck would have it, the Youth Services Committee has come down with laryngitis, which is very strange. So thus, being the experienced speaker and calm speaker that I am, as an associate member to present the budget.
Yeah, we got that message, you got me.
My eardrum has been disabled.
But representing the, uh, thank you. Representing the Youth Services tonight is Judy Hall, Kathy Dardino, and Tracy Helms, that have been the members of Youth Services, that have been consistent from NERESA through Youth Services to date. And being an associate member and not having laryngitis tonight, came to present the budget, which very quickly, all we're really asking for is level funded, the Youth Services director position, which is being funded at $46,441. We have a small revolving fund, and that's used for the programs. And do you need, you want to know what they've done, or just know that they've done a terrific job with the two directors we've had, through the last one that just left, Erica Hanson, did a terrific job and has finally taken the program to where this fine group of young women started it five or six, seven years ago, and it's developed where it is today, that it's got a great partnership with the schools, the police chief, the fire chief, and the member that's going to be the director is also a member of the Community Impact Team. So it can quite honestly.
Want to highlight some things? Feel free, if you take a couple notes and highlight.
We can. They, they run a great mentoring program where the high school students, it's facilitated by the Youth Service Director, and the high school students mentor the elementary school students that are recommended to the Youth Services Director to, to run. They run educational programs, especially now that they're a member of the Community Impact Team, which is great. They run programs at the schools and for the youth in agreement with the police chief, the fire chief, and the school superintendent, and a member of the Board of Selectment that's on that team, and Recreation. So it's great that the programs, there's no overlap, and again, being in Youth Services, you kind of run into a lot of the, the people that are the great speakers and come into the schools. So that's been working out terrific. They've got community service opportunities that if there are students or members of the town that may need some help, guidance, the youth director is there to help out and to, again, allow them to volunteer for some committees in town that need help. They support the families also, not just the students, so a lot of times there are parents, older siblings that might need help in, in the family, and they get a lot of advice and support from the Youth Services that can direct them, who to contact and his names and addresses where they should go to get help if we can't help them in there. They run weekend activities, they help also with the Gay-Straight Alliance that started this past year, and obviously many other programs, run different trips with the kids, especially in the summer, and help families that have at, at risk, and help students that just need to know how to get along with their parents. And obviously the standard. And obviously the standard that both Jenny and Erica have run over the past four years is extremely high. We're now in the process of interviewing a new director, and all we really need, the job applicant really just needs to earn the respect of their peers, work with the police chief, fire chief, Board of Selectmen, Administration, and teachers, and gain their respect, which the past two have done that and done a great job. Be flexible, run programs for parents and for the kids, and be an outstanding citizen, which is what we had in Erica, that won an award in the state this year, she was so terrific. So the standards are very high, the committee is taking this very seriously, they've been working nights for the past, I think, four weeks, doing interviews, and we got over 60 applicants. They've narrowed it down to eight in the first round, and they've got another round of applicants that they're doing. So they've done a great job in putting this together to get the position where we wanted it to be, and now that it's where it is, they're taking time to make sure we continue with somebody as quality as Jenny and Erica.
Appreciate all the hard work. You and we have been so fortunate the last, two times in a row, two directors have been fabulous, I just hope.
So they're, they've raised the bar, you know, very, very high, and this group is committed to making sure that, you know, they take the time to get the right person in the community. But the great part about Erica, and especially I think the new police chief, and even a new superintendent, working together have all got the same focus as which, what this committee had seven years ago, and now the focus is exactly where it should be, the whole town working together to solve the problems.
Mr. Frisco?
Rita, I had two questions, but you, you answered one when you talked about the, replacing the director. But has anything suffered since Erica's loss, since Erica left, as far as any of the programs?
To answer that, to be honest with you, the great part about it was, we've had some volunteers that had worked on the program with Erica before, that have stepped up to help Philip Dardino, not Big Phil, Little Phil, has helped to continue to run, you know, one of the programs at the library, where we ran the mentoring program, there's a volunteer that's helped there. So we've got different volunteers in almost all the phases of it to kind of continue it going. And even Jenny, our first director, is also funding, fielding phone calls, because she's in that business kind of to anybody that calls personally and has some issues, to still give them the information that they need. So they put together a great list once Erica left of how we can handle everything and keep it going until, you know, the new director's on board.
Very good, thank you.
Does the committee have a target date kind of to get this position filled? I know that's dependent on the candidates.
I think it's dependent, to be honest, dependent on the candidate. I said, we're running the second round of applicants now, it, they've come in waves, so they took care of the first group, and now we're interviewing another. Hoping it'd be nice to have somebody on board in probably six weeks, but, you know, that's, if that's aggressive, you know, there's maybe another two weeks of interviews, and then another callback of, you know, everybody that, you know, make it the final four, and then offer somebody a job. Two to four weeks to get somebody on board, so six, eight weeks.
Mr. Frisco?
Rita, in the budget that was submitted to us, you had for FY 2011, you had some, some data in there, some statistics, but the FY 2012 was blank, and I wasn't sure if you maybe had some. I was just curious, like the number of youths in the programs?
I think, to be honest with you, when Erica was, Erica was leaving, she sat down, she was putting everything together, and she kind of put together the booklet for that. So I think that the numbers, uh.
I assume they, they're going up, right?
They're going up, and I think more programs have, you know, developed since last year.
And the last thing I wanted to let you know, and I'm not sure if you've all heard, may have read about it a little bit in the paper, that this committee, the board, has unanimously agreed to fund a school resource officer, which I think will blend in really well.
Wonderful, yeah.
With what you guys are trying to accomplish as well, and tie it all in with the CIT, what they're trying to accomplish and the funding they have will help feed, I think, what your Youth Services Director will do in the SRO, to help really make an impact on our children.
And you're absolutely right. I think that when you had the Community Impact Team get together, I think that's what they looked at, rather than everybody compete for funds. That was an area that they felt was sorely missing, especially working with the Chief of Police, you know, what they needed, and I think what Erica and Youth Services felt like they needed somebody on that end. You didn't necessarily need to fund another person under Youth Services, you need to have that rapport with the police station in the schools is ideal.
But if, when you do have time, if it's not right away, I think it would be.
We can fill in the numbers, certainly.
Get those numbers.
Absolutely.
Because I think it tells a great story.
We will, and we'll get it back to you with a complete list of, you know, what the programs were and how many people were in it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rita.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank all of you.
Glad to start you again.
Conservation. Please come on. Yeah, think a bit, we, the sixties we had.
Ken.
Three, two. Thank you, Joe. Mr. Weiss, the board's ready, whatever you want.
Okay, our budget's pretty straightforward from past years, and actually, the budget was put together by the accounting department and handed to us, and we had no quarrel with it. And, and today we got a town administrator's recommendation on the budget, and he's reduced the budget for our agent by $10,000, so that's about all I know.
Okay, thank you. Is that your conus?
Again, for the reasons that we spoke to, is the fact that the spending on this position doesn't warrant the additional monies that are in the budget, the drawdown and the use of funds associated with this position have not warranted the full funding that was requested by the members of the commission.
I may be incorrect, but is this not a position that a few years ago, we ran into a situation where the budget was cut for this particular position, and about midway through the year, we came back and reversed course as a result?
We did.
We went to town meeting.
So is it?
No, we stunned here. Stunned here.
This position used to be funded through, kind of, the general.
It was revolving, so they ran out of money.
Right. Because we weren't bringing in the fees.
Right. We weren't bringing the fees, but that doesn't mean that the work of the agent isn't being called upon and utilized, and that we don't have to respond to applications or requests, whether it be from homeowners or developers or anybody else, so. I don't.
Mr. Jim? He's still there.
Yeah. I mean, you obviously did, you're up with this never in a vacuum, you have an idea as to what the workload is, has been, you must be anticipating, you know.
Yeah, we have, you know, we have no control over the workload. The economy, you know, sort of controls it. Economy could pick up and our workload could increase, but, you know, I think the town administrator's recommendation is based on how much we spent last year, more or less.
So based upon how much money is remaining to date after we gave an October town meeting transfer.
Can you explain that? Could I, could I make a suggestion that maybe Liz sit up here, so that, I don't know if she's being picked up by any mics, people who may be listening at home, probably not. Or find another microphone.
Or she can have mine on, she'll have it.
Really, that's, that's not a bad idea, yeah. We may, maybe, maybe not.
You can unhook the microphone and replug it.
So to date, there's still 16,000 remaining to be spent in that line. And at October town meeting, we transferred $9,000 in. So that 9,000 is still in line.
But come July 1st, what?
I'm not sure I understand.
No, in other words, the $16,000 remaining currently for the current fiscal year, we're talking about for the upcoming fiscal year.
Correct. I was just explaining the town administrator's reasoning for reducing their budget amount by $10,000.
Just, when I, indications, you know, I've seen, the economy is picking up, activity is picking up, again, maybe the building inspector can, can help address it too, where I think that the level of activity in relation to whether it be expansions on homes or ancillary accessory buildings are starting to pick up. I know the housing market, houses are not staying on the market very long here in North Reading, and I think what you're going to see as a result of that is some people expanding their homes, putting on additions, buying homes, and making improvements where you're probably going to encroach on what most of the town is wet, which is going to require some sort of oversight from the Conservation Commission and the agent. You know, unless we're going to, you know, reserve some additional funds, you know, in the reserve fund for the finance committee to transfer into this account, I think we can anticipate a high level of activity going forward. That's just my feeling, and maybe.
Mr. De Coller, would you mind coming up and commenting on that particular area?
You can sit right here next to Liz, you can get the microphone.
The, the activity is picking up, that's part of my budget. The permits are up 15% this year alone, but the new houses are up 75%. I've done four already from a year ago, so, and the sales are picking up, so the activity is really starting to move.
Mr. Frisco?
I agree. I, I have a lot of concern.
I have a lot of concern about reducing this budget by the $10,000. I mean, basically, what you see out there, what you're reading, your input is very important. I think we're making a little bit of a mistake if we agree with the $10,000 reduction in this request. I'm, you know, just, I don't think we can really base our decision because of what you, what little you spent in this current fiscal year. You know, things are just starting to heat up. I think we're actually on the swing upward. So I would definitely not be in favor of making a reduction to your original request. I'm not sure what we do with that money, though, that didn't get spent. What happens to it?
Roll the free cash.
Just roll the free cash.
There's no issue with that. It's just, you know, as Greg, I'm sure, will tell you, it's a really tight budget. So it's hard for us to find, you know, an extra $10,000.
No, well, very well aware of that.
I'm working off of anything that's true, too.
It was updated after.
What are your final recommendation numbers? What are they? Just so that...
The bottom, the total, the grand total, is 43,766.
So the only difference is the $10,000 reduction out of professional services.
Okay, it came out of professional services.
That's where the conservation agent gets paid from. This was an update after last week's financial planning meeting.
Mr. Prisco.
So, is it, is it an option that we take this extra money we have now and put it with the Finance Committee and the Reserve Account? And then, and go with the town administrator's recommendation?
The remaining funds from this fiscal year will just go to free cash.
No, what Steve and Mr. O'Leary suggested, if we decide to reduce this by 10, maybe why should we put the 10?
Right, that's what I'm...
The Finance Committee for next year.
Yeah, and I think we'll have the extra money from this current year that we're not going to spend. I don't think we're going to spend...
Well, no. Goes to recap, goes into free cash. We got a snow and ice deficit that's probably going to eat whatever free cash we have. So it's a budgetary issue for next year.
And again, if we do it on a historical perspective, you know, the recommendation from the town administrator and the Finance Director may make some sense, but I think we have to look prospectively and see what's really occurring out there in the marketplace. And just my observations, and again, it's not as keen as Mr. DeColer is, but you're well aware that if anybody's going to put an addition on their home or put it in a garage, a lot of the towns, a lot of the applicants are going to be required to go before the Conservation Commission prior visitation.
Yeah, all the permits, anything with an increase in the footprint goes down to conservation for the conservation agent's sign-off. If she's not here, it sits there and waits. I mean, you know, we try to get them out as quick as we can.
And that's...
We have to wait till Leah comes in to review it, go out to the site, come back and sign off on the permit.
And that's what we were facing a couple of years ago, when we had the issue when we reduced it. That's what we ran into. That's what, I don't know how we did it, but we ended up putting more money into this particular line item.
Town meeting, that's how we did it.
I don't know if it was a town meeting, I don't know.
We did it here. It went from 10 hours to nine more hours.
Yep, didn't we have to go to a town meeting for a transfer?
I think they may have, I think they may have done a reserve transfer for an anticipated level of activity.
Yes, last fiscal year, we did a reserve fund transfer for the, moving it on to the general fund, you know, budget. And then, this past October, so for FY 13, we did an appropriation at October town meeting.
So, no, again, I just think we can anticipate a higher level of activity than we've seen. Maybe the appropriation that we have for this year is adequate, but I think a cut at this particular juncture may be just creating another issue that we're going to have to address, you know, come October again, October. Because the, and I certainly during the building season, do not want to hold up on homeowners, you know, and developers necessarily, but homeowners in particular, just because we don't have the personnel in place at town hall to take the time to review the plans as well to a site visit. Particularly if the activity's there. And I truly believe the activity levels are increasing substantially.
And so that everyone who's listening knows, I mean, this slide item, if it's fully funded, is $26,000. So taking $10,000 significantly reduces it. It doesn't reduce it in half, but...
No, but I think the other important point that you point that out is that the general public can, I guess, take heart in the fact that we are scrutinizing the budget.
Thank you.
Down to the nickels here.
Yes, sir.
$10,000 item, we're having a lot of discussion over, but it's, budget's going to be tight, money's tight, and we take it seriously, but in this particular case, we want to make sure that the public is well-served and on a timely basis. I think we have an obligation to provide those kinds of services. And for the proposal, we may not be able to meet our obligation, as I see it, to meet responsibilities on a timely basis.
Mr. Weiss, any further?
No, no, except, you know, the thing is that we're trying to recruit more people to be interested in the Conservation Commission, and we've been unsuccessful. We can't get one person, you know. We used to get a couple of people to be associate commissioners, and they'd go to site visits for a couple of months and, you know, eventually become commissioners.
We feel your pain, because we're going to be left with the same membership of this board after this election at the end of the month, because no one wants to, not that I have any, I want my two gentlemen back, but, I mean, we can throw up the town. Throw up the town. You can't get people to step up and volunteer, so we fill the pan.
Maybe, maybe we need to do better marketing to recruiting or something.
Well, you might want to talk about the perks of the job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like to hear about it myself.
You hear me, so you open it to the outlook?
Twenty years.
Well, I thank you. I think you have a sense of where the board is leaning in this, so hopefully we're going to give you what you need.
We appreciate it.
To do her job.
Thanks.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Did we get a consensus of the board to, to instruct maybe the administrator to take another look at his recommendation?
Yeah, I would be in favor of town administrator taking another look and see, you know, what we can do with this particular budget, that particular line item. We have to look, we have to look forward. Mr. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Prisco?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you.
Mr. DeColer, welcome.
Thank you. The good news is it's the last budget you're going to have to listen to. Bad news for me, there's probably no money left. And after listening to the...
Wait till you hear the final recommendations on this budget.
Now I know I have to be here for 30 years to get health insurance.
You guys have been...
I've had a crazy night.
I know, right where it is.
Baby, more yet.
The budget's pretty simple.
Listen, when you go before you retire, get another job out in Andover.
You know, he brought up, because I worked in North Andover for 10 years, and it was Essex County, and I didn't have benefits, you know, I didn't have health insurance, but they transferred the retirement, they transferred everything when I left there into Middlesex Retirement. So, I mean, he brings up a lot of questions.
Right.
You know, so, I go, just last 30 years.
Besides getting through the tax, I'm telling you, it's not like...
Yeah.
As we talked about, the, the activity is really picking up.
This, I mean, we're only into the first quarter, and the permits are up 15%. The new homes, I've done four new homes already, and that's in the wintertime, so, I mean, it's picking up. Maybe they're getting a look at the new school we're going to get, so that's going to bring people in. I'm not sure, but I think that's going to continue. I believe people were waiting, and now that it's definitely on the upswing, they're spending money. They're putting on all kinds of additions, remodels, everything. And we've got some high commercial, Kiva Systems is putting on a million-dollar project, they're putting on a whole mezzanine in there. That's something to see those.
That's good news, because I didn't know what was going to happen with them, with the change.
Yeah, they're going to stay, so they're definitely going to stay in North Reading.
I guess, addressed to Greg is that, you know, we're looking to some additional revenue. Maybe we want to revisit the fees, if, in fact, there's a definite sign that, and also new growth.
I think Liz and I, the way we wanted to see another month's worth of revenue on the fees, we would consider increasing them, just in keeping with conservative outlook that we've had, but we are keeping an eye on that. New growth is very conservatively budgeted for next fiscal year at 325, and we feel as though that number probably will, is less likely to move than the permit revenue, so we'll look at that going forward.
Didn't you say less likely?
Less likely, yes. Yes. Yep.
Because of the lag in terms of...
Exactly.
Appraisals, I mean, projects getting to...
Someone comes in and pays a fee to the building department, hits the books right away, when that property actually gets accounted for and gets on the tax rolls, lags behind. So we think that probably a year from now, we'll be in better shape, but for next fiscal year, we want to be conservative in our growth projections. And as Mr. Hanks has said, it serves well to be conservative.
The level, the level funded, you know, as you know, we're in the last, July 1st, we're in the last year of the contracts, so there's an increase that's due to all the employees on July 1st. So if you level fund, that comes right out of the expenses. I know my budget, my expenses is only 33,000. That cuts that down to like 27. 20 of that is fixed cost, and when you break it down, it actually leaves me $116 a month for postage, paper clips, copies, everything, so...
That's a problem.
Well, if the growth goes the other way, it wouldn't be. So I'm really pushing for the level services on the budget for that reason alone.
Mr. Prisco.
Mr. DeColer, when I read through your budget, you had some FY 2014 objectives, but maybe if you wouldn't mind talking about them, because, you know, you talked about, you know, securing a module of building for your file room. You also talked about purchasing a ton of vehicles, more professionalism and inspection, so could you maybe touch upon some of those objectives and help me understand? And did you account for them in your budget request?
I did not. I have no capital in the budget. I could go back to 2008, and we had vehicles. We were trying to use a motor pool from the DPW where they would get vehicles and we could use them. In fact, my assistant still does that when he's got to go in the Swan Pond area where the cars can't go. He goes down and picks up a DPW truck, and he'll take the truck in. That really never took off. We ended up with a fleet of vehicles under DPW, this was when Mr. Hanlon was here, and so I really haven't, I haven't put it in, you know, I've had no capital since then. It would be a wonderful thing to have. We've actually had the police call on us, as we drive around neighborhoods really slow in our personal vehicles. People are looking out the window, they've called the police, the police have come out, pulled us over, so...
What if you just got one of those magnetic sails?
We got some magnets, we tried that, but unfortunately, they just don't hold that much. You know, the door isn't completely flat, and they're blowing off, we've lost a couple, and that's even worse, if somebody's picking one of those up and sticking it on their car. So we gave up on that idea. The file room you mentioned, we have one room with all the files, conservations in there, Board of Health, building, zoning board. We keep, we have to keep paper copies on every single property, and that's jammed. And, you know, I see these modules that aren't going to be used. I don't know if it's feasible to move them down here and stick one out the side. As long as we connect it to the building, you don't have to worry about any bathroom facilities or anything.
Do you ever think of putting out your, all your information electronically, or scanning it?
Eventually, you know, that's a goal of the town. I think that we still have to keep a paper copy. I'm not sure if we can destroy those once it's scanned in, I don't know.
We could send it offsite.
Offsite, offsite for storage?
Offsite storage.
Yeah.
Even if it's required to keep it for a number of years, you can ship it offsite, and that's really the advantage of electronics, you have access to everything, but your paper documents will be some...
They'd be gone. Yeah, we have to maintain the records for the building as long as the building's there. Once the building's torn down, then we can trash everything. So when the high school's torn down, the entire draw will go, because we'll have a new building.
Mr. Prisco, and Mr. O'Leary.
I was thinking about that, a place on, you know, in town where we could actually maybe move some of the old stuff that you haven't touched in years, but I know you need to save. And I know we're not using the second floor of the third meeting house, maybe we can organize something up there as a temporary storage to free you up some space here for the next few years.
It's a weight bearing.
Yeah, I'm not sure it would hold any, the weight of those files.
It's like the old library that used to have those book stacks holding the...
The books, that's right. The stacks of books were holding the floor up.
It was the David Tavern, it was the library, and we had stacks of books, and they actually collapsed on it, and the books were holding the floor up. It worked well.
And we accessed them a lot.
Unless you needed a book.
Yeah, unless you needed a book.
Mr. O'Leary?
I think that, you know, we talked about needing some more space here, and even for short money, if we can capture one or two of the modules when the time comes, to put out here, even if it's going to last another five or 10 years, it's still going to be worth it while we try to figure out what to do next with the town hall. So I wouldn't, putting the storage issue aside, I would still pursue or keep an eye on that before someone turns around and swings one of the...
Yeah, and you could use, if you could...
Devices that got out there into one of the buildings.
Yeah, if you could capture two, you could use one for meeting room, too.
Maybe that falls over to you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Prisco.
Well, no, secondary school building community, I mean, right by the two schools, I assume all the modules are going.
Not in the budget.
So...
Yeah, and I don't know what the life is of them, you'd have to check, you know, if they've only got two years of life left in them, you know. I mean, the middle school ones were already moved once, so I'm not sure.
There was trouble when they moved, they did a move in the summer, which is moving them to where they did on the site, but...
High school, though.
The high school ones, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they're in...
That cafeteria area.
Yeah, there's two sets there, yeah.
I just think that, I think the offsite storage is something to look at from a managerial standpoint, from an overhead standpoint, and climate control, you know, the only problem comes is when you have to go and find the documents, go get them, there's a lag time. But you look at all the law offices and everybody else, you know, a lot of them just use the offsite storage, climate control, and we don't have the maintenance and the upkeep of the buildings, you know.
We're going to need some estimates, somebody have to get some calls.
You walk into that.
It's a little bit delicate.
Administration walk into that.
And we could require them to give us electronic plans, you know.
Going forward.
When you look at that stack over there, there was a lot of trees.
Let's not talk about trees.
Okay.
Half of those are adenos, by the way.
I didn't want to hear that. The zoning board is relatively simple. The same thing we're dealing with, any creep up.
Just one more.
Oh, you stood up.
No, it's a question to Greg. Have you altered the recommendations that are in the initial budget book?
So you go with the... Only with, only with regard to the Conservation Commission, as Liz mentioned.
The Board of Appeals, the Board of Appeals is a relatively small budget, and for the same reasons, you know, I'm looking for the level services. It would really impact the meeting, the number of meetings we had, the postage and the advertising we would have to do, because the level fund would come right off of that. It would come off of advertising, training and education, and postage.
What percentage of permit applications have to go before the ZB?
What percentage of permit applications have to go before ZBA, do you figure?
Oh, that's a good question. I'm gonna say like, it's a low, I'm gonna say like five percent, maybe. Whether on a tight block, then they're gonna need a variance or something. The home occupations, really, they come in constantly. Everybody's working from home, they want that home office. And they need to come in and get a business certificate and open up a bank account. So they have to apply for home occupation.
Was this your question, Mr. Larry? I missed it.
I was just curious, you know, as far as the number of permits, you know, how many actually have to go before the ZBA? I mean, if the level of activity is starting to pick up and someone wants to put an addition on, within the.
It will increase the activity of the zoning board.
The activity there also, just because of the encroachment on that.
Did I read something, were you proposing a change in the home?
The home occupation, I mean, I would love to, the board is reluctant to do, reluctant to do this, I've talked to them. If I could handle, you know, when somebody comes in, if they explain to me, I'm just gonna use my office, I got a computer, this is it, I could issue them a home occupation, I could monitor it, you know, as soon as a neighbor calls, and they will, if there's ten cars in the driveway or if there's a sign up, and then I could go out. And I'm not sure, I think that would be a zoning change, because it's in the zoning book that they, so it would have to go to town meeting and be changed at town meeting. And the board's not willing to do that yet. They want to control the home occupations. The price would be the same, I mean, we could probably raise the fee a little bit.
Just free up time for the board.
It would free up time, yeah, for them to do the other hearings.
Mr. Fox.
Jim, I don't know if I heard you correctly. You said that a level funded budget would require you to, your operational budget would be required to supplement the increases in your contractual.
It would come, it would come right off the expenses if it's level funded.
Is that true? I mean, typically when we do, I thought when you do a level budget funding, that the contractual increases in salary was separate from, from any expenses or any operational funding.
A level funded budget needs to include any contractual obligations. Therefore, what Mr. Nicola is saying, where he would have to reduce his expenses, his.
Level funding would be no more dollars.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, just so. But typically, when I do a budget, we do level funding, everything other than collective bonding agreements that require, you know, we didn't, the department didn't negotiate those contracts, the administration didn't. His budget shouldn't suffer for that. So what you're saying then, Liz, is that the level funded number that's here, and it's personal services, personal services includes all the contractual?
Yes, the level, the personal services needs to include any contractual obligations. And then in order to have the same budget amount as last year, you would need to reduce your expenses.
So I think you covered, I think his concerns has covered that.
No, it isn't, no, it's not.
See, he's got a relatively small expense. So the salary obligations have basically been put onto the salary line item and taken out of the expense item. And he sees it more than some of the other budgets.
Salary is.
Yeah, I see now.
Ninety-five percent of my budget, so.
I see now.
The reason we do that is because most of the municipal budgets are salary driven. So if you look at where the really, the costs are associated with the municipal budget, seventy-five percent of our costs are in the main area of salaries. So if we exempt salaries from the level funding requirement, then we really don't achieve what we want, which is to show if we have no available revenues, this is the alternative. And unfortunately, in Atlantic or Reading, there's not a lot in expenses.
Any more questions? Mr. Frisco?
Just got more things on the electrical inspection. So did you mention the nine point four percent increase in other charges and expenses, what that was?
Where are you, you back on?
I'm on Dakota enforcement, and the program is electrical inspection. Oh, you want a page?
Yes, please.
We're done with that budget.
Two of.
Will you move on?
Oh, sorry. No, move on.
No, I'm kidding. So Michael, I was.
Oh, I'm okay.
Michael, I'm joking.
Come and see you.
Okay.
Michael, I'm joking.
It's driven by an increase in travel.
Right.
Thanks.
Just as part of your, one of your, was it an objective? We were looking to increase the travel allowance for your inspections. Inspector, is that included in your budget or not?
It's included in the level services, but I try to get a small increase in the travel because it's just so low. When gas goes to four dollars a gallon, you know, we take it in, so.
That was gonna be part of my, next question was, I thought we were covering the fuel separately out of the budget.
No, these are personal reimburseals of fuel.
They get a, they get a.
Oh, they get a.
Vehicle allowance that covers everything. The vehicle, the gas.
So they don't go down to DPW, bond and fill up, they go off purchase, and then they submit a receipt?
Nope. It's just a, it's just a monthly vehicle allowance, and they have to cover their gas and everything out of that. So I constantly try to get that increased a little budget.
Got it.
So what are we talking about for a level of that? What is the, what's the amount on those, monthly?
I believe right now it's two twenty a month for the inspectors.
There we go.
Is that two twenty a month there, Liz? Is that included in W two and their wages or not?
No, it doesn't.
That's not in the contract either?
No, it's not in the contract.
Really? I would suggest you might want to consider including that in collective bargaining. So he doesn't have to come here and ask for it or anything. It might be something that you might want to negotiate.
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. So you're with us for another, what, fifteen years now?
Yeah, with that thirty years.
Oh, my God.
You thought you were close, didn't you?
Yeah. Not even close. Mr. Larry, we will change that, I'm sure.
If you leave within five, Jim, you're on your cover. We're not looking for you to go either.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Right on time, our eight-thirty meeting with the capital planning committee.
Nine o'clock.
I know.
Hey, the clock's been fixed.
Yeah, someone was able to get up there and take thirty seconds and move it ahead. You ready? I'm ready, yeah.
We've been waiting on you.
Waiting for you. Looks like there's a lot of hard work, I appreciate it, and it looks like the dog went a year. This committee has done a lot less. Appreciate all the effort and everyone that's involved.
We've got most of our committee here tonight. Carl is not here, but he was at our meeting earlier today when we reviewed this. Thank you. This is our report in front of you in the binders. What was sent out to you earlier was only the individual pages of the items that were in the capital acquisition requests. But the, in the binder is, the first is just a cover memo from the committee, talking about what our process was. We, through the finance director, who is also a member of the committee, requested each of the departments to submit their requests for capital for fiscal fourteen. The committee then met with all of the department heads who had submitted requests. Or in some cases, we met with them with their consultants. DPW had a consultant that came in to talk about the roads. We also did some field visits to take a look at items that were in the request category for new items. We wanted to go out and take a look at what we were being asked to replace. So that was instructive. One late afternoon that turned into a dark and cold evening. So we were rummaging around the DPW yards pretty much with a flashlight. But we did go through all of the recommendations. There were a total of nineteen requests from general government and schools totaling a little over one point five million dollars. And another seven items from the three enterprise funds totaling six hundred and forty thousand dollars. The committee, the seven members of the committee, each individually ranked the items that were requested. And then we compiled those and did an average of them, so that we could get our input from several different people as to where they felt the money should be spent and what order the money should be spent for capital improvements. We didn't rank the items from the three enterprise funds, because we felt that their, the items they are requesting would only be brought forward, A, if they had enough money in their retained earnings to cover those, or they had the bonding capacity to do it. And they pretty much, particularly Hillview, couched their recommendations along those lines. So we didn't feel it was necessary to evaluate those. If you go to the third page, you'll see the list of items that were requested on the ranking sheet. Let me explain how this works. The department, obviously, the project, and we can go into as much detail as you want on the projects, the amount that the department head was requesting for that project. Our estimate of if these are funded, where they would come from, either from available funds or an item subject to bonding. And then the average that is shown here is the average of all of the scores given by the seven members. And we had it on a scale of five to one, five being the highest and one being the lowest. So on the very first item, IT, computer equipment replacement, this is the five-year replacement plan for the town. Everybody ranked this as a five, i.e. the average of five here. The road program, this is a multi-year program, although we're only looking at the first year. And this is the amount of money, the three hundred thousand dollars, that is the amount that the DPW is asking, that is over and above the chapter ninety money. There's another four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in chapter ninety that would be added to this. So it's about, almost an eight hundred thousand dollar item for the roads for fiscal fourteen. The police department is looking to replace the, their interview system. The system they have was put in when the building was constructed. It doesn't function. They need to be able to conduct interviews with prisoners or with witnesses, and they need to be done in separate areas. And this is the cost to replace that equipment. The school utility rack truck is a, I believe, a two thousand and four vehicle with a little over eighty thousand miles on it, that the cost of repair has gotten to the point where it's, it doesn't make sense to be putting a lot more money into it. The energy upgrade system in the hood school is the, for the boiler. And this would allow Wayne to control the temperature in the building remotely. And I think his estimate was, is about a three to four year payback on this. So there was a pretty quick payback on it, be like the system that's in place and going to be in place in the new high school and middle school, but not as elaborate. This would only be on the boiler. The DPW garage lift, there is a lift in the garage in the, you should go in on the right-hand side, but it is not in a position, because of some other lifts they've put in there. This is a lift that comes down from the ceiling, it's on an I-beam, comes down from the ceiling, and it's not in a good spot. They want to move it to the other side of the garage, put up another I-beam and put it in. It seems to make sense. This would lift the bodies off of the big sand trucks and things like that. The sidewalk program, this is an ongoing program. The DPW director gave us a list of sidewalks that were on a, a shortlist of sidewalks that needed to have some attention to them. This would take care of a portion of them. We expect this will be a recurring item, much as the road program is recurring, reoccurring. The school department iPad initiative. This is to purchase five carts that will store iPads. There'd be one for each of the schools, the three elementary schools, middle school and the high school. They already have, I'm not sure how many they have now, but they've got a couple already. And their overall plan is to have one iPad cart for each grade level in each school. So it would be, you know, six in the elementary school, or seven if you include the kindergarten, three in the middle school, and four in the high school, for one for each of the classes. Sidewalk, snowplow, this was kind of on the edge. This is a fairly old piece of equipment. And its ranking came up after it was damaged during the last, not the last snowstorm, but one of the most recent snowstorms. The truck we're talking about replacing up here in the school department backed into it. And it was.
So they both, they both moved out.
We thought, we thought maybe there was a conspiracy there. But the DPW director was looking to replace this truck, this plow anyway. It's pretty old, and it's a big, big item, it's hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And the school department asbestos abatement in the hood school, is that correct, Abby? Hood and Little. There is no immediate danger, but this is an ongoing program of dealing with chip tiles and the like, to try to stay ahead of the project. To do, we asked what the cost would be to do the, to remove every bit of asbestos, which isn't recommended or asked for here. And it's probably a half million dollar item to do that everywhere. And it doesn't need to be done if it's contained and it's not causing any problems. But this is more of a preventive item to remove what could be a problem in the immediate future. I've just gone through the top ten here, to give you some sense of what we're talking about in money. In the top ten, the total is almost eight hundred thousand dollars, it's seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. And if you look at the available funds versus bonding, about two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars would be from available funds and five hundred and thirty-one from bonding, if we were to do the top ten. Going down the rest of the list, and I can go through them, or you can look at them in the, in the document if you want. As I say, there's a total of a million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars worth of items here. About a million, two of that would fall under bonding, and the other three hundred and forty thousand would be available cash. We haven't set a recommendation for what to do this year, only to rank them. I think it's dependent upon what funds are available to do this, keeping in mind that anything that doesn't get done this year is going to have to roll forward to next year with probably a higher priority than it has this year. We asked each of the department heads to give us, as I said, the fiscal fourteen requests for capital. Next year, we're going to ask for a three-year request, three-year plan, so that we can look at not just the current year, but we can go out in three years. We have that in some of these, for example, in the roads program and the sidewalks, we have a multi-year plan from the department heads, because that's what they put together. But we don't have that for others, and there would be other departments not represented here that didn't have anything this year, but over the next three fiscal years, certainly we'll have something that, that needs to be considered. The committee felt pretty strongly, or does feel very strongly, that part of our charge was to take a look at the capital requirements, what needs to be replaced, to evaluate the requests of the department heads, and to bring it to the Board of Selectment as a recommended order of priority to deal with those items. The other side of that is the funding side of it. And Bob shared with me some information that he received at an MMA meeting that talked about funding of capital programs for towns and what some towns are doing about it. And I took that and I put together, starting on the next page of this document, a template for us to. template for us to consider, to set in, in place a long-term capital funding program. Without it, we're at the discretion of what's left in free cash, or, or, you know, it, it's the bottom of the budget. And what this does is it says, we're going to budget for capital items as we budget for anything else. It's important that we keep our, our facilities and equipment in good order, so that it doesn't cost us more money later on. The scheme that, that was used in the, in the, the presentation that was made at the MMA was for a percentage of the levy to be dedicated toward capital improvements and debt service. And they used, in the first page here, I, I, I'm showing our, our debts, excuse me, our, our levy limit, starting in fiscal 13, backing out the, the exempt debt that's in this. We're only talking about, about the, the amount that's raised in taxation outside of, of exempt items. And then a table looking to increase it, to set aside a portion of that, a percentage of that every year, to take care of debt service and cap, funding of capital, capital items. So, in the fiscal 14, to, to follow it through, the estimated levy limit at the end of 13 was $34,950,000. Rolling that forward, adding the two and a half percent allowable increase, adding new growth of $500,000, and these are just as example, okay? I'm not, these aren't the numbers that, that we're proposing, but just so we can follow through and see how this thing works. And I know that Greg has got a, a lower number in, in the current plan for that, but don't get hung up on the numbers, just think about the methodology here. It says that the, the estimated levy limit in 14, outside of exempt debt, is $36,324,000. I don't know if yours is in color or not, but the, the long-term funding goal, looking at the percentages, what I've used is for, for four and three-quarters percent. So, that says that in fiscal 14, that we would provide $1,725,000 out of the budget to take care of exempt debt, non-exempt debt and capital. So, if you go to the, the next page, the next page shows us the, what a five-year plan would look like using that, that set of parameters. 2014, the balance forward, what that represents is the, the capital st- capital stabilization fund, the balance in it at the end of fiscal 13. And I've used this here as the, the initial funding source of the capital program. To that, I've added what we just saw on the previous page, the, the percent of levy limit, the four and three-quarter percent of levy limit of $1,725. The current debt service, this is an actual number. This is our, our current principle and interest for non-exempt debt that we'll be paying in fiscal 14. So, that would need to come out of it. And then, uh, new debt service, now we'll get, get to that in a moment, that would have to be funded as well. We would, we would supplement that, that amount of money by some borrowing, half a million dollars in, in new non-exempt borrowing, and the $60,000 above, we just looked at, would be the current year's cost of that, if it was, if it was bonded rather than, than out on vans, but, but I didn't make a distinction there. The Chapter 90 money, which I referred to earlier, $491,000, said we have available capital of $1,692,000. So, it would be the starting money that we get from the debt stabilization fund, the new percent of levy that we would add into it, subtract from that the debt service, which has got to be in the operating budget anyway. So, if you look at the second and third items, you're talking about approximately $300,000 additional going in, over and above what would have gone into the operating budget, because we have to, we have to fund the debt service. And then, then just, some, some way it could be spent, okay? If we spent half a million dollars on equipment, which is where the borrowings come in, so $150,000 facilities, $776,000 on roads, that's the number from the DPW's three-year plan, that's the fir- the first year of it, and $50,000 for sidewalks, we'd, we'd end up spending $1,476, would leave us $216,000 in this fund at the end of the year. And it just rolls forward. But what it does is it gives us a plan of how we're going to deal with capital, gives us some sense of how much capital we can do over the next three to five years, and have it work within the budget. Obviously, there's got to be room in the budget to fund this, and I know this is an extremely tight budget year, and from what I understand, the $564,000, which I had as the seed money into this, is, right now is being programmed somewhere else. But when I did this, it, it hadn't been programmed anywhere at that time, but this would be, I think, a plan on a steady state. Doesn't mean you've got to start at that point now, but we do need to have a program in place that is predictable, that allows us to, to make decisions going out in the future about what it is we're going to replace, and, and to replace it before it gets to the point of, A, it's cost us more operational costs to do maintenance on it, because we're hanging on to it for another year or another 18 months, or we're, we're not replacing something that just fails, and then we've, and we're in a, in a crisis mode.
This is, this is just debt service we're talking about? Are we talking combination?
We're talking combination. If you look at, look at the tables, David, the, by, by putting in this example, four and three-quarters percent of the, of the levy limit into a fund, the biggest piece that's coming out of that is the, is the current debt service.
Right.
Okay? Which is, which is part of your operating budget anyway.
It's in the budget anyway.
Yep. Okay? And then the rest of it is going to, into this fund, and if you don't spend it all, it continues to roll forward. So, you've got some money, and you can look out and say, all right, two years from now, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to do a million and a half dollars in, in capital items, including those funded by Chapter 90. Okay? But it gives you the opportunity to, to start planning. I mean, that was the, the charge of this committee, wasn't a, let's review this year's items and, and go away.
But if we're going to bond a portion of, of our capital, and we're going to take from available funds, you know, or have funds available for it-
Yep.
-for cash spending, as opposed to bonded indebtedness and debtless, then how we tweak it and how much bond and debt as we go carry forward is going to-
Right.
Certainly be impacted, but-
If you, if you, on, on the table, I've got in here, the, the, a row called new debt service.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? This is the case where I said, we're going to borrow $500,000 a year to supplement this program. If you go to the next page in this, in this document, this is just a, a table showing how much money we would have to, to pay in debt service each year if we started a 500, if we borrowed $500,000 a year, every year, for the next, forever, okay? And in the very first year, because it's starting up, it would be $60,000. In the next year, it would be that 60 plus 117, so it'd be $177,000. It would get up to about 500 and, I think, $535,000 would be steady state, borrowing a half a million dollars a year if we were, 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 were borrowing it at a 4% rate for five years. Okay? That can vary, the rate's going to vary, it may be that some items would be, would be longer than that. But what I was trying to do here is put together a methodology, a template, if you will, for how we can think about capital going forward, because, as I say, looking at the list and saying, yep, this, this is our rank order of them, without having a clue if we have a nickel in our pocket or not, isn't, isn't real helpful for the town. So, I think the, both, both sides of this, the funding side and the, and the spending side, need, need to be considered. Yes?
You mentioned the 564 that you have in your example. You originally thought what's going to be allocated for this program is not longer. Can you explain that?
Well, what, what I have seen, and I'm, I'm not, not, not part of that committee, but what I, what I've seen in the, the, from the discussions that have gone on so far in the, in trying to close the envelope on this year's budget, and looking for funds wherever they may be available, the $564,000 is the, is the capital stabilization fund that's got its, its genesis in, in the, in the berry, and then has been, been funded over the years.
Being applied to offset what comes out of the debt payment-
Right.
For this coming year.
So, it's, it's being used to balance the budget this year, right? Most of it, I believe.
General government budget.
General government. Well, no, it's being used to balance the budget, and on the budget is, is, includes the schools as well.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
It's being used, applied to the debt service, and then the leftover money as a result of it has split.
If, if, I think, if you said that if the debt service is $1,528, then the debt service is about $1 million, if you back that out of it.
Right, okay.
I think what's important here, and this is a model that can be adjusted up or down, tweaked, but i- if you follow what Dawn has done, and you, on the second page, you can see, you know, if I borrow the $500,000 a year, and on a five-year basis, you reach a point where the debt service number doesn't change with respect to that borrowing.
Right.
And if you look at the balance, based on a spending plan of what he's proposed, is somewhere in the, well, it's growing for available capital, starting once 1.6 in, in 2018, going to 2.2 million dollars, that there's actually a growing amount in the capital fund, which would deal with that unforeseen, or-
Right.
Or some other project. What, what this is, is it's just saying, basically, you're going to start to borrow for anything, short of some major, big project, I would guess, on a five-year basis, whether it's qualified for 20, it sort of implies that.
That's what this implies, but it may not necessar- what I said is, I was trying to, to show how this flowed through a plan. If you had something that, that ought to be bonded for 20 years, you ought to bond it for 20 years, not for five years.
But I view that as kind of the, the big project, that-
Yeah. You're doing, you're buying, you're buying, getting a truck, or the, the flail mower, or something like that, you're going to, you're going to go five years.
So, and I'll rigor with that, might be a fire engine, which has a like-
Absolutely, absolutely. And then the, the, if you go one more page in here, this is just the, the, a table of the, of the general fund non-exempt debt, of, of how it's, without adding anything to it, this doesn't have the $500,000 added to it. But this is what it looks like through, through 2022, but if you go out the next five years, it's, it's, it drops off, after the next couple of years, drops off pretty significantly. If you went back one, two pages on this thing, the, the table where I, I show the current debt service, after, after 2018, we'll still have, well, $4.2 million in debt service we have today, okay? And we'd have another $1,345 if we borrowed half a million dollars a year. So, you could take that $1,345 and, and, you know, and tack it on to this. But this, this will give you a graphic example of where we are in debt. I guess the, the, the bottom line, and I've, I've said it, and I'll say it again, is that came from the committee, is that we need to have a long-term plan. And a long-term plan isn't just meeting for several weeks at the beginning of the year and rank ordering a, a bunch of items that we don't know whether or not can be funded. The plan is having a plan, so that when we do the work, that, and we come up with some recommendations there, we can tell people that this is what, what the, the program looks like, and we should be able to do something. And it helps us in our, in our entire budgeting process.
I think it's-
Thank you very much.
I have one request. Can you change the name of our committee to the Capital Improvements Planning Committee? No. You guys, did you guys vote it?
Yes.
Oh, you did? I didn't know that. Okay. Oh, it's on here too.
See, we took care of that.
God bless.
See, you were way on-
We didn't want to be CPC.
Just real quick, as a chair, if I may, I just want to thank everybody who was involved in this to begin with, the whole, the whole committee, they did a great job, and, you know, we met every Wednesday for several months, but a special thank you to Dawn as the chair, who I thought kept everything running smoothly and making sure that we were down a path that we wanted to reach, you know, our goal, and made us, made sure we, we got there. So, thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
And also Liz. Liz spent a lot of time, you know, gathering all this information, and then put it into the product that you have here to be for you today, so I did attempt to do it, but Liz had to rescue me, so thank you both.
It was, it was a group effort.
But thank you.
All right. So, you know, board members, what do we do? I mean, all the time that was put in, I think they, they have a plan that we should seriously consider.
I think it's kind of difficult to consider any plan without knowing where we are financially, what we can spend.
Well, I, I mean-
It really is difficult. If we don't have that five, that money, that 564 that you mentioned, then what do we have?
Well, do you really need that, in the sense that if you put that into the capital plan, it's going to go to offset the cost of your existing debt, which, which is in your budget, and you're going to have to cover anyways?
That's a way of getting around that issue, because it's, it's going into debt anyway, so you're paying for the debt out of this plan. The problem is that you, as Dawn has presented it, picking the 4.75, because it's just, it works well, is that we're not going to be able to squeak 4.75 out. I guess what I would propose, and this doesn't answer the question that you have, but I think we need to make a, a serious commitment to say, if we want to implement this kind of a plan, and I think this is a way of getting there, that we say, okay, we can't get the 4.5% in one year, but let's start to go, and in the meantime, we'll try to get as much capital purchased on the, on the list as we can by methods that we've used in the past, until we get to a point where we can take advantage of this. And I think you can take advantage of some of it almost immediately with the borrow, but the expenditure is going to be a lot less.
Right. I, I agree. That's what I like to see.
You need, you need a million, you need a million five, okay, to satisfy the debt service for fiscal 14. So, if you look at the table, okay, and you go down the table, then 4% would give you $1,452, 5%, excuse me, 4.5% gives you $1,634. So, if you, if you, you know, if you said, let's, let's do it, but let's do 4.5%, you'd put, you'd be putting about $100,000 more into the plan than you need for debt service, and that may be a place to start, and that's all you can do this year. And then look at your, your, your list of items and draw a line where you, where you've either run out of available cash, or where you can have a comfort in, in bonding it. But I, I think that we, we need to do something. The fact that you can't put it all in doesn't, doesn't mean you shouldn't do something.
I suspect at this point, we know what our snow deficit is.
We do.
And we know what, we have free cash.
We do.
And we've looked at all our reserves.
We have.
Whatever they might be. And I would ask that the chairman and the town administrator and finance director kind of get together and look at, you know, how all that fits and what can, or cannot be done, and report back. There's a financial planning team meeting on Thursday. It would be nice to at least have a vision of that, with the school department anxiously waiting for some input on their shortfall. And at our next meeting, we'll have enough information to say what we can or can't do with the, the capital. And at our next meeting, we'll have enough information to say what we can or can't do with the capital.
I'd like to see all that writing.
Well, I, I would expect it to be writing.
I would imagine it would be presented.
Okay. We don't have it right now, so I just wanted to make sure.
We don't have what?
We don't have, we don't have any of that, what you just described, what
I, no, I just asked for something to happen. I'm assuming that it'll get put together in some
Think they're working on it for the financial planning team meeting on Thursday, and then following that.
I understand what the financial planning team is getting, but, you know, I'm asking from a selectmen perspective.
If you, if you let me conclude my statement, is that I think they're working on putting those figures together, the financial planning team on Thursday, that's where we first rolled out, and then from there, it'll be presented to this board. Finance committee will have it, the school committee will have it, so that's
Okay, and then just maybe continuing on that, when do we gotta address this in the timeline? Is it next meeting, or is it the one?
I think it's the next meeting. Next meeting, it'll be next year.
Oh. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
No, I, I think it's important that we should, as a board, establish some sort of policy, and I don't think we're there yet as far as what a percentage should be.
Right.
And maybe we can look at it even from a historical perspective, as to how we've had to react to things, as opposed to plan for things. But even in the course of reacting, should give us some sort of a benchmark as to, you know, what are we expending on a percentage basis annually, and then take a more measured approach in relation to being proactive, instead of reacting to things. And then, then establish some sort of a realistic, and again, it's an investment in our equipment, infrastructure, you know, things that we, you know, maintaining our assets, that we, that we should be making anyway. And again, unfortunately, we constantly get put into a reactive mode, rather than a proactive mode. So I think the board should, at some point in the not-too-distant future, set some sort of a policy, in the form of a policy statement and goal, as to where we want to be, and then, as Bob pointed out, incrementally getting to that goal, so that the financial planning team is aware of it. And I think the financial planning team needs to be an integral part of assisting the board, this board, in establishing our policy. Because again, we don't want to do it in a vacuum, for town as a whole. And the financial planning team is a good resource to kind of iron those, those types of issues out. I think in the, in the short term, we should really be looking at establishing some sort of a policy, goals, to implement the plan, so that when we're budgeting, just as we did a few years back, we, we dissected the budget a little bit differently, and allocated your school department, including their benefits and all the rest. You know what? Shared costs are what they are. Let's lump the ball together, see what those costs are, set that aside, now what's left to do, yep. That was a huge step in the right direction. This also could be a huge step in the right direction, maintaining our infrastructure, our assets, on a more planned basis, rather than reactionary basis. So I think it's good, I think it's a, an effort that we should undertake, and do what we can show to honor.
Very good.
On, on Monday, last night, the school committee had their public budget. Very well attended, there was a half a dozen people there, unfortunately. Maybe there was more than that, but it was the usual, the usual people.
Wasn't more than that.
Mike, Mike and I were there, and I thought they did a very good job of identifying not only the budget drivers, but going into the detail of their offsets, and some funds that they are drawing down this year, and wanted to help close the gap. And one of the reasons why the financial planning team meeting was scheduled for Thursday is to go back and take a look at those numbers, the town's numbers, and see what can be done there. Unfortunately, we still have no idea of what House One is gonna look like. Brad Johnson said that he didn't anticipate a cut, nor an increase, but here we are in the beginning of April, and no date in sight as to exactly what that, what those numbers are. And obviously, the governor's proposal, it has gone very far, because someone's heard something I haven't heard, sitting in limbo, so. So we have that level
It's being addressed.
Yeah, we have that level of uncertainty all, you know, sitting here too, which usually by now, we're getting close to knowing what the House One budget is, and how it ties in with the governor's budget, and you can start to feel a little better about things. But we do have some uncertainty that could go, even though it might not go, and it could go negative. And that's another concern that we would have. It's a consensus of everybody, based on, we refer to move the plot on, and assume that we are level funding. And that level funding is, is basically really hurting all the communities, not just North Redding. It's basically saying more and more unfunded mandates coming down, and no state funds to offset those additional costs.
Thank you. Financial planning team will have the information that was requested on Thursday, forwarded to the board, and use it capo at our next meeting.
Which is the 20
20 seconds.
20 seconds.
20 seconds. Chair of Finance Committee, cater
Um, both, both, Dawn and I will be at the meeting on Thursday morning.
I gotta pinch it.
I've asked
I gotta pinch it.
I've asked, I've asked Dan an email, which I don't know if he's opened it or not, that I would like Dawn to be there, because if we're gonna be discussing the capital plan in any way, shape, or form, I think that Dawn is the job, of course, find it, and I would like him there with me as chair of investors.
That, next question I have. Has this plan been forwarded over to superintendent of the school committee?
At this time.
Can it be done so before Thursday? So that I, that I don't have it Thursday morning.
Well, we should, we should have a copy of it for Carl anyways. Carl was at our meeting.
Carl should have it.
Sure, I just wanna make sure they all have it, before we walk in on Thursday.
So is there a party express, or something?
I'll send it electronically.
Call it an email?
Email.
You can have these extra ones, that you, you did in the binders, I don't think a lot of us need.
Just send it by email.
I'd like you.
Thank you.
Do you want to do my hard work? All my hard work?
I did, no, I'm sorry, I, I, if you'd asked, I would have told you, but it was, it's very nice, though, thank you.
I promise. Yeah.
The board's gonna review it tonight.
Okay.
List, does anyone have any further on the capital, or you can move on? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appointments, board of registrars.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for appointment as member of the board of registrars for a term to expire April 1, 2016. One opening is Kylie Gamelin, 89 Park.
Motion to second.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Leary.
We have a letter of recommendation from the town clerk, registrars, that's, I can see distributed as a result of a resignation. Long-term member Chuck Fanniff, who decided not to seek reappointment. Personally thank him for his service, obviously, for the number of years that he's been on there. And as stipulated by statute, you know, the clerk and the registrars are required to ask the board and town committees for recommendations. The recommendation has been made for Ms. Gamelin to be appointed, and the town clerk concurs. As to why as liaison, I would recommend that the board support the appointment.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-0, 1, 1 absent. Item 11, seasonal license renewal, Hillview Snacks.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the Komovich license for GFM Hillview Snacks, 149 North Street, to expire December 31, 2013, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? There are none? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
4-0, 1 absent.
Is any word on what the anticipated opening date of the course is, given the current state of
Michael, I think, Michael, I have more information to you. I heard provided, tis a lack of rain this week.
They were trying for tomorrow.
Oh, okay. Oh, thank you. I had heard next Monday. Great, that's great, good news.
We're getting a week behind.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, very good.
I think about three weeks ago, I was cross-country skiing out there, snowshoeing. Amazing.
Item 12, discussing inter-ministerial agreement for Pine Forest Park subdivision.
Can I jump in?
Can I?
Of course.
I'm sorry, can I refuse myself?
I have a feeling I'm a small
This is not this matter.
Mr. Valiakonis?
Board members, in your packet is a draft inter-ministerial agreement between the town of Andover, the town of North Reading, and the Angelo Petrosino trustee for the Reliance Realty Trust. This is part of the subdivision, which, 11 lot subdivision located in Andover, with access via roads in North Reading, up in the area of Martins Pond. The board had previously entered into a settlement agreement, which ended the lawsuit between Mr. Petrosino and the town. However, the Andover subdivision approval, amongst its many conditions, has a provision in it that Mr. Petrosino will enter into an inter-ministerial agreement with both respective communities. And that's what's driven this document, which has been prepared by Mr. Petrosino's attorney, and incorporates in elements of our settlement agreement as appropriate, to memorialize the terms and conditions in the legal format between the two communities and Mr. Petrosino. It's been reviewed by our council, his comments have been incorporated in this document as appropriate, and it's before the board for its review and comment this evening.
Thank you. Board members?
Just as a scrupulous thing here, under section 2, provision of water service, there's a bullet number 5. Nothing there. I don't know what the
Good question.
I don't know what was supposed to be there, if there was supposed to be something.
It should be the road, the temporary construction road. It's completely missing from the document. And if you recall, our whole premise of taking out the bonding language and everything else was all based on Mr. Petrosino agreeing to install the construction access road that was approved by DOT, which is completely silent of the entire document. I mean, other than that, I think it captures everything else that we wanted, but I was a little surprised that that wasn't in there at all.
I'll speak with town council about why that's not there, it should be there, as you pointed out.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Greg, is, is the goal to get this signed at our next meeting?
It is.
Because Andover wanted to know, they were hoping they could get it tomorrow, but I don't
We originally wanted to review this document Yeah, we had a special town meeting that, that unfortunately precluded this coming before the board a couple of weeks ago. So this is before us, just because of that issue tonight. And will hopefully come before the board for its vote, ratification on the 22nd.
And I think, you brought it up before the meeting started, but Andover's having a meeting tonight on this subdivision?
Yeah.
Conditions, Petrosino's conditions are gonna change?
No, there was a change in conservation, I think, that's who the, they're having an appeals board tonight. I believe it's with conservation, and I don't know what the subject is, but they are changing, they are making a change. So, but nothing that impacts us.
How do we know?
I already had asked. I have talked to Jackie.
We don't know what the final change is, it'd be too
Yeah, I, I mean, I would want to know what
I could find out, like, easily.
I don't know if it needs to be you, or
Doesn't matter.
But I would want to know what action was taken tonight, if there's any impact on this agreement. If so, council needs to look at it, in addition to including the lawyers that should be
It's sitting on my, it is sitting on, the notice is sitting on my desk. Somebody from Martins Pond sent it to me with a note describing that, you know, they were gonna be there tonight in attendance. I didn't, I don't have the detail with me, but my understanding was it didn't have an impact on the North Reading agreement. It shouldn't have any impact on our agreement. At least that's what I was told, but, you know, if you want the town administrator, or we won't continue my conversations with the planner.
I don't know how the conversations have gone. I don't know whether they've gone from Mr. Valiakonis to their town manager, I don't know how those
No, I've had no conversation with the town manager relative to the Petrosino agreement whatsoever.
I, I just took upon myself, about several months ago, to just reach out to the plan. I went and visited with her, and just brought along the concern of the residents up there, and the concerns of the board. And she's been fantastic, and kept, keep me in, in the loop on things, and we continue to keep communicating mainly through email. That's how this got on the agenda, because she had asked me where it was, and quite frankly, I didn't really know much about it, so that's, that's it, so I'm willing to continue to keep that communication up.
Okay, I guess that's, that's how it's going, I appreciated you.
Absolutely, I do not mind at all. I think it's, it's working, so I say, let's just continue.
Mr. O'Leary?
Just under the billing and collection clause, I guess it's on page 5. If you recall, one of my concerns was, I didn't want to get into collecting, the town getting into the business of collecting from, you know, 10 or 11 homeowners, or whatever it was going to be, and that we should have one customer, which would be the homeowners association.
Association, right.
Which would do two things, one, it would give us one entity to bill, and then the responsibility of collecting and maintaining an account to pay for, and we just have a valve to shut it off, or turn it back on. And two, it would also increase the number of gallons that they're being using, potentially put them into a
Tier 3.
higher cost range, in order for us to provide the, the water to them. This kind of opens the door, and somewhat leads them, leads me to believe that it would be anticipated that each one of the dwellings would be separately metered, billed by us, and the homeowners association would be responsible if someone didn't pay their bill. I didn't want to get into, personally, I didn't want to get into that, and we originally
No, that's what we agreed on, you agreed.
And when we could put the agreement together, the intent, I thought it was clear, was that we would have one customer. And how they go, and go about allocating the usages amongst themselves, and within their own association, associated with that, so
This language was inserted, more of the document was circulated back amongst staff. The water department requested that they have the ability to separately meter. So this was language that came from our staff within, based upon the fact that they felt that it was just simply easier for them to be able to bill and meter separately each customer, versus having a separate valve. It does not preclude the right that they could have a separate valve, but they're just looking at what would be most efficient for our departments, and that's why this language could put in here, Steve.
Would it be more efficient to bill individual homeowners versus have one valve?
Yeah, the thought, the thought is the homeowners association could, is fraught with problems down the road in terms of whether they would actually make payment.
Well, the thing is, and to me, if they don't make payment
Shut off the water.
we have the right under our bylaws to shut off the water.
Right.
Yeah.
No, that was all discussed, and we will work on the original agreement.
And we would, you know, so that it would be incumbent upon them, and again, whether or not, you know, we would have a right to place a lien on, on the individual homes there. I really don't care if we have control of the valve, my guess is eventually they'll pay. If they don't pay, they sink their own wells, and good luck to them, but then they're gonna have a whole host of problems, because it's gonna be one of the conditions of, of building it, and they have a lot, a lot bigger problems. But maybe what we were looking to incorporate wasn't realistic or simplistic as I thought it was going to be, but I was trying to keep it simple, and I didn't want to deal with eleven separate homeowners in the town of Andover, and I, first of all, I didn't want to deal with this whole situation, but didn't want to provide them anything. But that being the case, I thought we made it fairly clear. We wanted one customer, one bill, and how they go about collecting it is their business, just incumbent upon them to pay us. And that's why we were assisted upon in a homeowners association for that reason, and also the maintenance of the gate, and whatever else they're responsible for.
There's language in here that says that any delinquent balances would become the responsibility of the homeowner association, so that protection is still there in terms of protecting the town's interests. We just felt as though, again, based upon what came back through our water department, we felt that this was an easier way to give us the opportunity to deal with each individual customer versus having one simply separate valve, and then having the homeowner association get into a dispute about who's used what for water usage.
They can meter their own.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying... Just suggesting what our staff is recommending is easier.
I thought our water department weighed in on the agreement we had with Petrosino.
This says that they may, Sean, it doesn't say that they shall, they may. And it does provide language in here that the homeowner association is responsible to make delinquent balance incurred by the residents in the town of Andover.
The other thing is, Greg, is if, if there's a leak within their infrastructure, within their subdivision, and waters, we're losing water within the subdivision, and we're billing each individual home...
Right, we never know.
We don't know...
Who to bill?
Right.
Well, first of all, I don't know what, but the usages, what the loss is.
Bill and meter at one location.
And whether, and if they don't maintain their infrastructure in there, you know, we're controlling everything up to that point. Whatever's happening in there, they're supposed to maintain, they're supposed to do this, they're supposed to do that. To me, I just wanted to meter it, right, as it went in there, and they can go ahead and meter them and allocate it appropriately based upon the usage, based upon what the bill is from us, but that's...
Well, there's a fear that the homeowner association going forward isn't going to have the means to be able to do that, and that's the reason why this language was put in here, is to protect the town. That if the homeowner association fails to appropriately bill its owners for individual water usage, again, that that's, that's an issue that we tried to address here.
If that's the case, you know, then there, within their homeowners association documentation and their deeds, and Sean, you can help me out, there could be a clause in there that would require the ability of the homeowners association and anybody that they owe a credit to come in and place lien on any and all of the properties.
Steve?
There's got to be a way to do it.
I would believe so.
I mean, what we're doing here is we're negotiating against ourselves.
Right.
And Mr. Petrosino had, had already seen this in the initial agreements that went back and forth, and was willing to sign up to it. I mean, he didn't have any objection to it. It sounds like we're objecting against ourselves here.
We're taking language...
So, we're negotiating against ourselves.
The language in here should mimic the language that was in the agreement with Petrosino, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
There shouldn't be any deviation from...
Unless it was some compelling reason.
Right. And maybe...
And maybe, I'm missing something, maybe we're missing something...
Correct, yeah, could be.
From the water department, I'm not missing, I get it.
But they weighed in...
There's no doubt that it's easier to, you know, everything's electronic, I have eleven different meters, and you bill the people, and they don't pay, slap a lien on them, but to me, I was interested in having one customer and let them worry about themselves. I'm not looking to make this easy for the homeowners association, Mr. Petrosino, the homeowners association, they want our water, they're our customer.
We were bringing it, the concept was, we bring it to Andover, we bring it to the town line of Andover, that's where our responsibility ends, and then Mr. Petrosino...
Which is just much like Andover does for us.
Correct.
They bring it to our line, and then we bill.
Right, and the meter's at the line.
And the meter's at the line, they send us a bill, and how we allocate it, how we bill people, and whether we have any leaks or not, we're responsible for it.
Correct.
So, it's just a little mini, mini deal.
And the other, the other situation is, someone doesn't pay the bill over there, you can't even go and shut their water off.
Right.
You can shut everybody's water off, but that's about it.
Right.
We have this, this is what's frustrating to me, is we've had these discussions a long time ago, but coming back at it again unnecessarily. It was all about not going directly metering each one of these homes for the reasons already stated by Mr. O'Leary, and also if there was a problem in those lines from our border into Andover, how do we get in there to do it? You know, what do we have to do to get in there to do it? And this makes no sense to me.
Again, I just want, I just want to treat this small little portion of Andover the same way that Andover's treating us. We're their customer, and how we bill our customers, our users, is up to us. Same thing with them.
We're supplying the town of Andover water at that intersection period. Maybe we should bill Andover.
So, maybe it's a little more difficult for our water department, but to me...
We'll mark their water up.
You know, and I understand the concern with the viability of the homeowners association.
That's right.
So, you know, there's got to be, council should be able to assist us in assuring that the members of the homeowners association are responsible for their financial viability, whether it be through, you know, placing a lien on their properties or whatever it is, you know, somewhere in their documents, their deeds, there needs to be some requirement that maintain the homeowners association's responsibilities to the town in North Reading. And if that's not going to be part of the deed restriction, you know, then we have a concern, and we have, we do have a problem.
Yeah.
So, to me, the lawyers should get together and just work it out. This is our desire, we'll supply it, these are the terms and conditions, they're our customer, how they handle it is up to them. We need to just protect our interest in the event that the homeowners association isn't being supported by its members, we need to be able to get at the assets of that subdivision, which are the homes.
Question? Mr. Frisco?
Maybe some of the longer-standing board members can help me here. Number five, the term, do we have to actually have a term on here? Is it required by master of law?
It is.
It is?
Yes.
So, Greg, where you, where it's referenced about the party, I'm sorry, Bob, you asked on page, page five.
Page five of the...
Number five, on page five.
That number five.
It says here, provided that nothing herein shall prevent the parties from renewing or extending such, such term. Now, whoa. So, what, what's that process we have to go through? Is it a difficult one, is it lengthy? I mean, I...
No, what I'm saying is, we don't have an obligation to provide water after 25 years.
My guess is no. You know, when you have agreements like this, I mean, you can negotiate, but you can't shut them off.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is...
It's like the 99 years, at least the dam has had as a Swan Pond, that's been going on now for over a hundred years. It's just automatically...
Okay, I just wasn't sure.
I don't, but I don't know exactly what the language is that they're referencing here. I don't know. The chapter four.
I assume council knows, and...
It simply says that...
I just wanted to point out to the members that, you know, this is only for 25 years, but that's good with me.
So, so what do you foresee? And again, what's driving the timeline here, the approval of north of the border?
We're not, the approval is being driven by the, the other party's desire to get this thing wrapped up as soon as possible. Frankly, this came in, was much to surprise to me. I thought we were done with it. And again, this is being driven by the town of Andover, they're required it in their subdivision.
That's good, we appreciate them looking out for our interests, and they have pretty well. So, as far as the billing and collection portion of it, can we get back to council to see if there really is any roadblock to fulfilling our desires and wishes?
Will it fall back to the language that was included in the settlement agreement?
The water department has a very serious issue with it. It would be nice if they could provide us the feedback with the detail of why they have such an issue with it.
I just think that their concern is general, as I stated, that the failure, failures that the homeowners association at some point will fail, and that then the town, it's easier for the town to simply bill and collect individually from each one.
And what they're not understanding is that we don't want to be part of that issue.
Sure.
If there's a failure on that side, then let the failure be on their side.
That's right.
We want to bring it up to the town line, and that's what we're done.
Then they run dry, the town.
That's it. It's just nothing we can do about.
Well, I mean, can I ask, I'm sorry, Steve, go ahead.
I'm just looking at something about our water commission.
If you turn, if you turn to page four of the document, under C, maintenance, talks about an execution by the homeowners association of a written agreement with North Reading. We have the homeowners association assumes the responsibility of the operation, maintenance, three-peer replacement of Sid Waterworks. So, I presume our water department accepted that language.
There's no other language.
What do you mean, no other language?
You're talking about that there be some other document that's been executed? There's no other document that's been executed?
No, no, I'm saying they were comfortable with this language concerning the maintenance of the waterworks, so I, they seem to be conflicted. If our water department agreed with this language but had a problem with the billing and collection, just doesn't make sense to me. I think they need to, I'd like to have the water department here, probably, the next time we review this.
I just think the, that one there, I think it's basically indemnifying North Reading and Andover from the maintenance and upkeep, but it has to have an agreement with us whereby if they spring a leak, you know, you know, what's our reaction going to be?
But I would think the water department would have the same issue with this. It's, once again, it falls back on the homeowners association. If they had a problem with the billing and collection, then if their homeowners association would belly up or something...
All right, it's a good point.
Why wouldn't they have a problem with this provision here? Because this is, puts the responsibility on the homeowners association as well.
Was there something in here that we have the right to enter the... It fails to perform any repair of the North Reading, right here, in number three. This is also a concern. In the event that the homeowners association fails to perform any repair or maintenance required, North Reading may enter the property and cause the required maintenance or repair, and North Reading may recoup any expenses incurred in connection with this. See, to me, Andover should be going in there. They're residents, they're paying their real estate taxes, we're just providing them with the water, you know. We have a water main break or anything in the town of North Reading, Andover says, "Thank you," just going to pay us for the water. I don't, I don't need the ability to enter the property or the premises to take care of their problem. Because again, if they, we're worried about the viability of the homeowners association and paying their water bill, what makes you think they're going to pay a repair bill?
Right.
I don't want to get, you know, I don't want us to be, you know, in the repair business for Andover residents. We don't do it for the Wilmington ones, we don't do it for any of the Middleton ones that we supply water to. So, I appreciate the water department's concern in relation to the viability of the homeowners association. I think we're overthinking it, and I just think that we need to make sure that there are proper deed restrictions in there that provide protection to the liability that the homeowners association has, you know, to the town in North Reading. And that's the assets of the subdivision, which are each and every one of those homes in there individually and collectively.
Well, you know, it's interesting, if you go back to page two now, with the agreement under section B, the creation of the homeowners association, this is what I think, Mr. O'Leary, you were looking for in terms of that sort of protection. It runs, just take a moment and read that. I think this covers it. The requirement of the establishment, the recording of it, the registry of deeds. It runs with the land, it's binding upon all the owners...
Right.
...of all the lots, forever.
That's all I need, there it is.
That's the language. We're done.
I think we need to, I think we need that, but I think we need to see what the final deed restriction is going into each and every one of those deeds. Give us this blessing, and make that clear to Mr. Petrosino's attorney. But I'm sure he's fine with it too, he doesn't care, because once he's done, he's done, he's out.
He's out.
That's somebody else's, that's somebody else's problem.
The members of the association?
He's going, he's going to agree to most anything at this point. But I just think we're putting ourselves in harm's way with some of the language that's here.
All right.
And I'll, I'll get back to the board, I'll email you after I speak with Andover.
Thank you, Mr. Frisco.
Other than that, it's fine.
I was surprised that this came back in full time.
Moving on, page 13, reviewing town meeting warrant articles.
Mr. Foody's coming back in. Should we document that? Okay, warrant, I go, page...
Eighty-nine of 122.
Yeah, got this, nice.
Welcome back.
Just want to make sure everyone has it. Okay, first thing is the timetable. We've included a calendar in the packet, which gives the key dates associated with the warrant, which is May 6th, which is the date for the signing of the warrant and the voting of the budget. That will ensure that your recommendations are included with the finance committee in the warrant that goes to the printer and then ultimately gets mailed to residents. The other key date that we've identified in here is scheduling a recommendation, scheduling a special meeting for the purposes of holding the budget hearing. The budget hearing should take place prior to your budget votes, and we've identified April 29th, and would ask your, respectfully ask your consideration for that date, or a date somewhere in that last month of April would be appreciated. I think I had mentioned earlier that we have received an opinion back from the Department of Revenue stating that there was no legal basis for scheduling a special town meeting as part of the annual town meeting. What was requested is that all of the fiscal year 2013 business, which is shown here as Articles 1 through 6, and the special town meeting be labeled as Articles 1 through 6 in the annual town meeting, and that there be clear wording in the warrant article description indicating that it has to do with fiscal year 2013. And it'll simply be accomplished by the heading in each of these articles, including the language, FY 2013. You can see that it's already there on Article 1 and Article 2, they'll add it for the remaining articles, so that it's clear that each of the first six articles on annual town meeting warrant deal with business issues associated with the current fiscal year.
Not necessarily going to a secret ballot?
And not necessarily going to a secret ballot on these issues. Not tonight. So, the, each of the articles that's here, shown as Articles 1 through 6, are standard template articles that we have, that we've included in the past. The details do remain to be, to be filled in. The one exception to that would be Article number 6, which is appropriating funds for the overlay deficit. And that is due to the fact that in fiscal year 2013, we do have an overlay deficit which has been incurred. A request, I've made a request to the Board of Assessors to declare an overlay surplus in the amount of the deficit, so the funding source will be from the existing overlay account, and the amount is $32,619.
And this is the Verizon settlement?
It is indeed. Thirty-two, six, one, nine.
So, the overlay reserve surplus. Stephen said, okay, so, so right now, basically what we've set aside for the overlay excluding the surplus is short?
Each of it, each year is considered to be its own separate bucket. So, although there may be surpluses that exist in prior years, the only way that that can be used to cure the surplus, the deficit in fiscal year 2013, is so the Board of Assessors to declare those prior year balances as a surplus, and then have those surpluses applied toward the 2013 overlay. Cumbersome process.
And what was the Verizon settlement?
It has to do with the, the tax status of public utility infrastructure throughout Commonwealth, and Verizon had indicated that they were exempt from local taxation. That loophole has since been closed... That loophole has since been closed going forward, but they had a number of appellate tax board cases, not only in North Reading, but throughout the state, looking to recover those monies. And in fact, they prevailed, and the town did owe them money, communities throughout the state owed Verizon money, incurring a deficit in those accounts.
What did that, what did that have to do with Verizon prevailing?
Sometime, sometime after the start of the fiscal year. So we started our year with the expectation that this would not happen. So it was not anticipated that the ruling would be unfavorable to cities and towns The other, other one I wanted to give you some detail on is the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, snow and ice deficit. The snow and ice deficit is, of this state, is one hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars. Earlier, the board had asked, how do we cure that? We have a balance of three hundred eighty-four thousand, six ninety-six in free cash. So if we apply that to cure the deficit, that leaves us with a remaining free cash balance of two fifty-eight, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. So the recommendation is, we'll use free cash, and then we hope that it doesn't snow.
What's the free cash number again?
Three hundred eighty-four thousand, six ninety-six. We have shut off, I have shut off all snow spending, so we are not buying any more materials. If we were to receive a major storm, we hope that Mother Nature and the efforts of IDPW accrues is sufficient. We do not have a supply of salt on hand, it's expensive, and at this point, it's not prudent to spend money where it's not necessary. So we ammo on materials.
Great. Financial planning team, we had asked that we look into a spending freeze, loosely spoken, but is there a possibility, and I don't know if you had a chance to go through and make some estimates on that?
Yeah.
To use some of that money to offset the snow and ice? And if so, what mechanisms would we use to do that?
What we've typically done is we've, we've utilized free cash to cure our snow deficit, and then in terms of appropriating monies either to the stabilization fund, which would be article five, or the debt capital stabilization fund, article number three. That's the mechanism that we've gone through individual accounts and looked to remove surpluses from those accounts to fund those other savings and kind of categories. I can tell you that at this point, we are running good on health insurance. If you look at employee benefits, the health insurance side is tracking favorable at this point, and we do not anticipate that there's gonna be any new enrollment between now and the end of the fiscal year. So I anticipate that we will have a balance available to transfer either under article number three or article number five. And as you mentioned, we will go through as, as we get further into the year, and look to where there are additional surpluses that can be transferred for the purposes of supplemental funding of either of those two accounts. Any questions on the special town meeting articles? Or should I say the first six articles of the annual town meeting? The, the other articles that are here are, are standard articles. What I'd like to do is rather than go through those in detail and discussing those, we'll go through those at the warrant article hearing. I would ask you to turn to article six. Article six is bills of a prior year. It's a four-fifths vote. At this time, we do not have any bills of a prior year, but I can promise you, as we get to June town meeting, we will. And they typically involve medical bills for our disabled public safety personnel. There's always a lag, and typically, they're not, there's not a substantial balance that's involved in those bills. Article seven is the operating budget, and I'd like to address that separately under my report with some recommendations and actions associated with that. If you allow me to just continue along. Free cash transfers to supplement the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen budget. We have not ultimately decided on what those will be, and not made our recommendations to the board at this point in terms of what those will be. However, for the purposes of an article, we've reserved it, because what we wanna do is we wanna keep the, those transfers separate from the budget, their non-recurring costs. And you'll remember, at the June two thousand and twelve town meeting, we did appropriate some of our free cash for the purposes of supplementing the operating budget for one-time costs. It remains to be seen whether we will do that for this year, but we want, again, to make sure that we have an article there just in case. Article number nine is capital expenditures presented this evening. Article ten is funding of retirement obligations. That is the town's share for employees who are retiring. And what we do is we get a number from the schools based upon anticipated retirements, and we also get a number from the town from anticipated retirements. We have a request that's gone out to all of our municipal employees, requesting that they are now thinking about retirement in the next fiscal year. They let us know. They let us know for a couple of reasons. Number one, it's the right thing to do, and number two, we wanna make sure that we budget the money.
We have no requirement in any of our collective bargaining agreements that they give us notice by a certain date?
No, none at all. And we, we are requesting for budgeting purposes that people alert us to that fact.
We do have a school number there.
Yes, we do. So in terms of what the cost is for that? We have a projected budget of two hundred fifty thousand dollars for that, and that is level funded for, for the past year, which we, for this year, which we've also budgeted two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Can we establish a revolving fund for that? Whereby if we don't expend, it can stay there, and then we could just supplement it?
Yes.
Appropriately?
We, we, the reason why we do this separate from the budget is the balance does survive the close of the fiscal year.
It does?
Yes. So at the end of this fiscal year, we will reassess when we get closer to the June town meeting. And if we find out that any of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars hasn't been fully expended in this year, what we will do is we will have that money and appropriate that money for the purposes of this article. So those, those balances don't necessarily close out, because what we like to do is we keep it separate from the budget.
That's, that's as a matter of practice.
Yes.
Not as a matter of accounting.
Just a practice.
That's a practice.
Just a practice.
Yeah, so I guess, and again, it wasn't that long ago when we weren't doing that, and, you know, we were advocating, some of us were advocating to set this account up. I think we're at the point where, you know, I'd like to, to set a, to have a revolving fund, so that we don't have to keep appropriating it, because those funds are really available for other purposes. And just as a matter of practice, we're taking the residual leftover funds, allocating it, making it up appropriations. Say if there's a hundred thousand dollars left, we won't have two hundred and fifty in there, we appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into it.
Yeah, we won't, we won't spend it for any other purpose other than for retirement obligations. So we're, we're pretty clear that we wanna isolate that money and keep it separate from all other funds.
Oh, we're not necessarily obligated to do it. Again, this is another, another area where we, we've made great strides.
We made progress in this area.
Yeah, we've made progress.
Considerable progress.
Made progress, but if we really want to address it, we should establish some sort of, and yet again, the, the balances can fluctuate anyway, but I don't wanna see it emptied out and then reacting to a later on. I'd like to see us actually build up the kitty, and depending upon what happens, you never know what's gonna happen at the state level, you know, if early retirements are offered and municipalities opt into it, and that's what wiped out the account one year a few years back, and we built up a pretty hefty sum, five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars, and in one year, teachers early retirement package went through and wiped out the entire account.
Administration is a bit fearful that the retirement obligations, number four fiscal fourteen, will be high, because it represents the high watermark under a number of our collective bargaining agreements, where employees can be grandfathered when they retire in terms of what they can buy back the benefits.
Right.
So there's some concern.
So given that, shouldn't we, shouldn't we be looking to put more in here?
Well, that's why we're, we're going out and we're doing an assessment to our employees, because we think it's important to come back with actual numbers rather than just, just But we've already started that process.
To me, I kind of looked at it similarly as, it's basically a stabilization fund, depending upon the fluctuation of retirements, so we don't have to appropriate a big chunk in one year or nothing the next year. We build up the balance, and if we don't need it for the following year based upon our assessment, you know, then you, you lower your expectations and your needs. But we haven't just taken that final step of making it based, a revolving fund where the money truly does stay there. We can still get added if we need it, I suppose, but we're not all gonna be here, you know? So I like earmarking funds sometimes to memorialize, to memorialize the practice, you know?
Revolving fund is the mechanism?
It's a mechanism.
It's a mechanism.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure it fits the definition of a revolving fund.
That's what I was thinking about.
Because a revolving fund implies that there's revenue coming in from outside the town.
Okay.
That's why we, we did it in the form of the special warrant article, because it was the only reasonable way that we could ensure that those monies are isolated and continued forward.
Yeah, you're correct.
Correct.
Yeah, there isn't a source of revenue for, outside revenue.
We'd like the outside revenue.
Yeah, I know, it'd be nice.
But again, it is something that we're cautious about. The other item of caution, and it's got nothing to do with this article, is the salary pool and pressure associated with that, with the one-time fifteen percent longevity payments that will also be ending in fiscal year two thousand and fourteen. So retirements and fifteen percent longevity bonuses are the two things that we're cautious of. We can predict the fifteen percent longevity bonus, because that's a number that's known to us. We know exactly the number of employees that have not taken it, we know what their salaries are, and we can do the math and come up with a number to the dollar of what that benefit will cost us next year. This one's a little more difficult and a little more of a challenge. Next, Martins Pond flood mitigation.
What number is that?
Article number thirteen. Again, the other articles here were, were standard. As you know, we did have a borrowing authorization to repair the culvert down on Route sixty-two in Wilmington. It was found that that solution, from an engineering standpoint, was not viable. We have not expended other than conducting some engineering studies, a significant portion of that original borrowing amount. However, keep in mind that what we do at this point is we may not be subject to receiving any state or federal grants. And this article really needs to be vetted out further. It's on here for the purposes of just providing an article that we wanted to include on the warrant.
Right, somebody was taking the action to see if we can, the money that was appropriated at town meeting, if we can continue to use it even though we lost a grant, right?
That money at town meeting was, was specific to improvements to the culvert on Route sixty-two. And I think that in terms of it, of really going forward and moving to the next level, we need an article that really deals with other issues. Perhaps there are other improvements up in the areas of Martins Pond that we can look at. I'm really uncomfortable now that that's not, no longer financially viable solution. Continuing to use that article, I think it, I think it's a slippery slope.
Okay.
Fund repairs to town buildings. This came out of discussions with the board and in the budget presentations in terms of how we deal with building repairs, not only for town hall, but a number of our buildings that come up. None of them necessarily meet the definition of capital, but we wanted to make sure that we had an amount of money programmed in here to, to really address building improvements.
I guess, to go along with this, I gather we found a hundred thousand dollars in unspent articles that were consolidating to fund this?
That, that would be precisely the goal.
Okay. So I, I think as a board, what we need is a list of items that are gonna be targeted here.
Good idea.
You know, I understand some of them are fifteen, twenty-dollar items maybe. I don't expect it down that level, but I mean, how much is gonna be applied to town hall versus the building of the common versus, you know, there's gotta be some kind of plan rather than just have a open.
Bucket of money.
Sure.
And I wouldn't be against having a portion of that just said, you know, unforeseen appears.
Miscellaneous, yeah.
Miscellaneous, but I think we need that, just for.
We need to fix one of the clocks.
Transparency, yeah, right.
Exhibit, one's got the right time, one's got the wrong time. Actually, the sign in front of the third meeting house needs to be replaced.
The sign itself, yeah.
But, yeah, I, I agree, there should be something. I'm sure there is a laundry list of, of things to do.
It is time. It's well overdue to make some minor, there are minor investments we can make that may go a big way.
Fund the draft environmental impact report. The request is for two hundred thousand dollars, and this is related to the sewer funding project.
Waste water manager?
Yep.
No, I don't think so.
Nope. This is water.
No.
I think that comes later.
I thought this was state statue of, the completion of the water.
The water.
Waste water.
Okay.
The completion of water, of the water park.
Okay. Now, and I know there was a CIP request for the same thing but related to wastewater.
That's where I took it from, yeah.
Okay, but that was for, to do a wastewater study that is going to be tied in with the analysis we're gonna have to complete to do the water.
Yeah, but the wastewater study is funded from available funds, it's part of the berry, right?
No. In the CIP, actually, in your little spreadsheet there, what is it? I think it's bonding, right? They're gonna bond a mine? But it's actually very low on the list, which is, I was concerned of, that you guys didn't score very high, so.
Right.
Which I think kinda impacts our plan for going to MWRA water someday. It could delay that if we don't fund that particular study.
Right, based on?
Well, I, I think we have to take a step back here anyway, and look at our ability to go to the general populace and ask them to fund any type of major project in the, in the near future without some source of other type of funding.
Right, I agree.
You know, if we're talking betterment, or really, it's just another form of a tax on the homeowner, so it's, it's gonna be a hard sell. And I think we need to get realistic about it and see what our timelines are gonna be.
I thought originally, Bob, the same as you. I thought we were gonna be able to fund that from available funds, but.
One of them, yes, and one, no.
This one's, this one's the water one.
Yeah, the water would be funded from.
But I didn't understand, if you looked at the CIP one, it's about the wastewater, but it's all related to getting MWRA water.
There's three. There's storm water, there's wastewater, and there's water.
Potable water.
Right.
One of them we have money for, and I thought it was the wastewater.
Joe, what's it say on the spreadsheet?
I think you're right.
Is that available funds? Is that how we're gonna fund it?
On the, on the, which one?
Go ahead, go to the next page.
The water or the wastewater?
Go to the D E I R.
Bond.
We're gonna bond two hundred thousand. And then if you read what it says in the detailed sheets, it says it's all about water and associated with MWRA.
Yeah, which is.
And then this one is the same, but it wasn't higher.
Which will come from water surplus or funded from water revenue, and it'll be bonded.
Yeah, you know, the, the wording's wrong on this.
That's what I thought. I, I got confused.
They put the wording in for the water and the wastewater.
I thought so. I had a feeling that's what happened.
Okay.
I'll send a memo.
Thank you.
Can we move on?
Well, obviously, we should still continue to invest in doing the necessary studies to position ourselves well.
Right.
But with our timeline.
There is, Steve, there is a timeline. I think it was presented to the board, right?
It was.
What's that?
It was a timeline associated with getting those permits and moving forward.
Yeah, we presented it here about three months ago.
Right. Those timelines now realistic as far as our ability to go out and get it funded.
I guess the way I look at it is the water is within reach and MWRRA is anxious to do it. Having that permit and all that stuff that has to be done, done in place, and it's going to eventually result in savings, lowering our water costs, and also providing the gateway to sewer because once we have water from MWRRA, we're getting water from Ando, we mudball our wells.
We're not pulling out of the Ribbit River.
We can pump stuff out of town. So, there's a sequence of things that have to take place.
Okay, I understand.
And then we have the other thing hanging over our heads called storm water.
Right.
Which we make another unfunded mandate.
No, I really would like to make it a priority that we fund at least the water portions of what's being requested, and if we can do it through available funds and not borrow, I think that's be super helpful.
No, I think you would borrow those funds, but you would fund the payment from the enterprise outside of, and that was the enterprise stuff.
Right, so if you look at.
It skipped over.
Right. So, it's, the water one is in the, is under the enterprise to be paid for by.
Okay. So, is this article's related to that? No.
I guess we need to get Article 15 tied in with the CIP plan. And we're talking about potable water here as opposed to storm water management and Ando sewer.
So, we don't need an article to go in.
We just need to get it clarified.
So, we can get rid of the article.
I wouldn't get rid of anything yet.
It would be included under the capital. It would be included under the capital.
But if there's, if we have some sort of source of funding here of $200,000, if we have some idea, then that may alter.
I think you want this under an article.
I'm not disagreeing, but I just think we don't need, if it's going to be prioritized, and if the prioritization is, well, actually.
It wasn't prioritized.
It was or it's not.
It wasn't.
It was not only because it's going to come out of the enterprise.
Right, exactly.
Going to come out of the enterprise, then there may be some other available revenues here for something else.
But.
Or another step in this process.
Okay.
So, if I look at the stuff in enterprise, we don't, we didn't put the Hillview or the Parkson rec stuff in an article.
Yeah.
Why would we put that in?
That's why I'm confused. I hear what you're saying, Bob, but it just, it's confusing me because we have all those other items in the CIP that we're not doing articles for, so.
Good question. And the past, the Hillview never showed up as a capital, right? They just allocated a capital dollar amount in their budget and then spent or didn't spend depending on the revenue flow.
Right. And my guess is that they would want to continue that practice.
Yep.
Rather than get mixed up any of it because it's so volatile as far as.
But when they've gone out to borrow, they've listed the items they were borrowing.
Yeah.
When they were buying capital.
Was it two-thirds?
Directly from their operating budget. It was just in their operating budget.
Right. When they go to borrow, it was a two-thirds vote.
Yeah.
So, a separate article. But anyway, are we looking to expand the number of articles, obviously, between now and then to include some capital items and?
I would say none.
Because you're waiting till October.
I've said, yeah, but if you're borrowing, it goes.
Yeah, so, again, the plan is still to talk about the capital items, but generally it's October. We've been putting those off until October.
Right.
I'm sorry, you don't mind if I get comfortable, Mr. Chairman?
Craig, what didn't you think you were capturing by adding this Article 15?
I put down sewer.
Well, it says completion of the water pot of the DEIR.
Give me an opportunity to speak with Mr. Carnavale tomorrow. He was the one that submitted it through the board.
Okay.
Yep, that's fine, but worth addressing, obviously. If there's other timelines and it's associated with those timelines, it makes sense.
Well, aggressively, they were trying to get all three of them kind of done in parallel, but I, the reality is ain't going to happen. But I think the water is an important step, and the storm water, you know, I don't know.
You don't have a crystal ball, so I really wouldn't, it's not on my priority list right now.
No, but unfortunately, it's on somebody else's.
Have to put him on the committee and then he'll be on his priority list.
I'm talking for this next fiscal year.
Okay.
Article 16, trust.
That was the money that we were going to put into last year.
It is. It is. Article 17 deals with providing money to cure a chronic problem in the police detail account, which is the fact that expenses don't always equal revenues that come in. The police department has made efforts to guarantee that in the future, anyone that has a police detail on outside detail either pays in advance or has a longstanding business relationship with the town, but there is a small deficit that the finance director recommends that we cure from available funds so that that account is back to zero.
Why are we doing it for FY '14? Wouldn't that be prior year? Wouldn't that be part of it?
No, no, because we still pay the amount of the police details that are due. So, this doesn't, this doesn't have anything to do with payment to officers. Officers, this is, has to do with the balance in the account, so it's not available prior year.
What's the number?
I don't know what the number is, Michael, not off the top of my head. 20,000? 20,000?
20,000. I'm confused.
But if you're carrying it.
We pay, we, you know.
We pay and then we bill.
Some outside vendor owes us money for the details because we, you know, so we pay the officers on a regular weekly basis, a regular basis.
Over a period of many years, that deficit builds up slowly but surely, and the intent of this is to cure that deficit and bring that account back to zero because what ends up happening is from a financial standpoint, it's a hit on our free cash every year.
No, I understand, but why wouldn't we, why wouldn't this be an article, one of those first six articles? Why wouldn't it be there? Why wouldn't you zero it out at the end of the year?
I hear what you're saying.
And then go, because if you're carrying it by going forward.
Your point is good.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, your point is good.
I mean, going forward, we're trying to reduce the impact.
Right.
Make that go to zero.
Zero the count as of June 30th.
Yep.
Be a current year bill.
Taking it out of his current year operating budget.
It is coming out of his operating budget.
He's got the money, too.
No, it's coming out of his budget. It's coming out of somebody's budget, or is it just cash flow?
No, we have to appropriate.
Yeah, it's coming out of the police department budget.
Yeah. Article 18 deals with expenditures related to the paramedic shift coverage. I put it in as a placeholder so that we can isolate what our costs are associated with We may decide that we wish to incorporate it within the budget. That would be fine if that's what we decide to do, but again, for the purposes of having a clear understanding of what all of the salary and expense items after that, we thought that the appropriate way to do that would be to show it as a separate article.
So, this is for, go ahead.
Going forward.
Now, I guess one of the things that came up when we reviewed the budget, and this is why now all of a sudden, this raises my eyebrows a little bit, is that in the overtime budget, our chief's intent was to get to a staff of five. Now, I know that it wasn't going to happen instantly on July 1st, and in the process, the overtime budget between this year and next year didn't change at all. And when we were talking a year or two ago about this whole thing, we said, in our contract with the, we kind of gamutued, we would hold the overtime budget flat. In other words, we wouldn't decrease it, but we wouldn't increase it to cover the additional overtime costs as related to having additional staff. And in the chief's proposal, his proposal was to.
Fill all the shifts.
Fill all the shifts. So, in other words, if, in a five-man shift, if one person was out, right, he would fill it, which, at least in my head, though running through the nitty-gritty, would suggest we needed an expansion of the overtime budget. And that came up again at the financial planning team meeting, and Lisa mentioned it to Liz, and still haven't, she was going to go back and take a look at that and kind of make sure that he wasn't underbudgeting. I mean, I'm still think that we ought to hold at the era that the chief should apply his wits' authority to determining when he should have someone there and when he can ride with four men and try to save some money. I know that the revenue from ALS is coming in as or better than expected and probably could fund the additional overtime, but he's not requesting it, so, you know, what's wrong? Is it that the overtime budget this year was too high?
Why is the article in here? That's, I guess.
The article is in here merely as a placeholder, Michael.
And the rationale supports what Bob's saying?
I, this has to do with simply showing what the new cost would be of expanding to additional paramedics in the department. That's what the intent of the article is.
Maybe I misunderstood.
No, this would seem, to me, this seems to suggest that it's for coverage when.
Yes, when they get called.
Current fire, no. Current, I, coverage for shifts that are open because you have a firefighter at paramedic school, so you have.
That would have been my misoppression, too. I'm not in favor, I'm not in favor of, let me put it this way. I'm in favor of isolating, I'm in favor of isolating within the budget the costs associated with covering, sending our firefighters to paramedic school and whatever, you know, coverage is associated with that, so that we can identify and track it and so on and so forth. I'm not in favor of this particular, at this particular time, of expanding the number of men on a shift to a minimum level of five all the time, which you're applying this may.
I'm not applying anything, Stephen.
Okay.
I'm just saying the article is in here as a placeholder. I don't have the details. I don't have the specific dollar amounts. I will have those for you. I can get those for you after I meet with the finance director and the fire chief, but I don't have them, excuse me.
Okay, but if, just for my, so we can save some people some time, from my vantage point, if this is to get to five people on a shift, I'm not in favor of it at this time.
I concur.
Yeah, same.
Same.
I guess that's unanimity.
Yeah, it should be deleted.
And if you're looking to isolate the costs associated with getting more people up to the paramedic level, isolating the costs associated with sending people to school, we can do that with another line item in the budget and identify and isolate some resources to cover those shifts while someone else is at school. I'm okay with that. But I don't think we need any more money to do it. I agree with Bob. The revenue stream is coming in to cover these people, cover the stipends and cover the shifts. I don't think we need to necessarily increase the overtime budget because that wasn't the intent from a year and a half ago, brought into the program. Then I understand the chief's advocacy and appreciate it.
If you want to, the remaining articles, Articles 19 through 27 have to do with revolving funds. Article 28 has to do with repeal of a statute concerning indemnification of retired public safety personnel. The article's been put on because it's no longer an affordable benefit. It was accepted by town meeting. The method to repeal it is also through vote of town meeting.
We just, for informational purposes, find out when we accepted it.
We did, I have it.
Says it.
Oh, does it?
Nineteen eighty-two, October 4th.
Okay.
This is my concern with an article like this even being posted tonight and the next one as well. I mean, shouldn't there be at least some discussion in advance with the unions before we post this stuff so they understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, so they don't pack town meeting to kill something that, you know, ultimately is going to hurt us to be able to fund their ability to do their job in the future? I mean, I'd rather have those open dialogues before we even have it as an article.
It's a good suggestion, things like.
And the same thing with the next one, too.
I agree.
I don't want it to show up in the transcript on Thursday, you know, and if I have them find that out, I don't think that's the appropriate way to do this. I'm not saying I'm not in favor of doing what we're asking them to do in these two articles, but we have to learn from our past, and if you talk to the union reps, they've all said, "We don't communicate. We find out about this stuff through the paper or through," this is a per example of it. And I think we're going to have a little bit of work to do on the next one. I'll wait to hold my comments until we get there, but.
[laughter]
Can't hear you down here, I'm sorry.
Well, it's not going to get in this week, right?
At this pace.
So, in the fire department budget book, there is staffing.
Are we going back, Bob?
Thirteen levels, fourteen, and he's got staffing based on the three additional paramedics. Now, we already had one, and then one additional. So, he's got a budget in here for that. What I don't know is what, how that rolls back into the margin of the budget.
So, back to Article 28, is that, is that a bargaining, is that subject to bargaining? It's not.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
The method of acceptance was vote of town meeting.
That's how you're saying.
But I do happen to agree with your comments.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, with the town meeting, special town meeting two weeks ago, the discussion that normally we would have didn't take place. Our situation was a little bit unique. Article 29 is similar request to the board concerning public safety.
Yeah, and again, I mean, to me, this one is subject to bargaining. And I, I mean, I mean, we.
I think.
I'm all for it, but again, I think it's this communication thing, and I also think it needs to be researched. I mean, Reading has done it, right? We should talk to Reading, learn what they've learned. Seems to be working well over there. I know Andover's doing it right now. And I also think that we probably should have some level of negotiations before we go to town meeting. Again, if, you know, history proves itself, I mean, Steve, I know you tried this in the past years, and it's failed on town meeting floor, and I think if we try to negotiate this in advance of that.
I just tried the chief's. I didn't go this way.
Well, this is pretty, this is pretty big.
No, I know.
You know, and again, if we.
I had three strikes.
We don't work the unions in advance, they're going to stack the meeting hall in, we're going to, we're going to lose, and we're going to look foolish. So, I'm all for it if we're willing to sit in advance and try to bargain something in good faith with them, because I don't want to see. good faith with them, because I don't want to see us get the crap kicked out of us on town meeting floor, because that's exactly what's going to happen.
Guess what I don't know is, what do you mean by bargain?
Yeah, you're not bargaining, you're just talking to them, you're going to meet with them.
Oh, Mr. Delary, you want to help me out on this one? Because I believe you're going to have to bargain on this one.
Generally, you would sit down at the bargaining table to inform me that this is the intention of the board to perform, file a special, but there's nothing really to kind of agree with, either they're going to be shoulder to shoulder whether you want it or they're not.
Right.
Right. There's no bargaining.
There's no bargaining. Of course, it's town meeting.
Of course, it's a good gesture and promote good relations.
They're not going to offer a 10% increase to get, to allow us to get out of a-
That's what I view as bargaining. I don't see this as bargaining.
What did they do, I mean, again, like I said, I'd like, I'd like maybe the town administrator to have, take the action to talk to the town administrator over in Reading to learn how they did it and what they're doing.
The purpose, this has ended up in there because of the frustration we have over dealing with the civil service department that's falling apart. They're not doing their job. It's got nothing to do with our personnel.
No, it delays us in terms of making hires and promotions.
But the thing is, the protections under the civil service laws and regulations are pretty significant.
They are.
Significantly weighted in favor of the employee, so in order to-
Especially public safety.
Right, especially public safety, yeah, particular public safety. So that to talk about removing that, you know, with the, with the unions, my guess is there would be some reluctance to, to talk about that, and we're talking about people who aren't even members of the department yet.
Right.
But they know the benefits that they've enjoyed and the protections under civil service, and they would not necessarily want to, and I can give you all the arguments as to why they wouldn't want to do it, but, but there's no doubt, a lot, a lot of communities are turning away from civil service.
They are.
Much because of the same reasons and frustrations that we're experiencing in relation to trying to fill positions, you know.
But I think in, in Reading, the only one more reason why they were able to do it is they actually had to pay. I think they done eight percent raise across the board.
That's exactly what the bargaining unit's going to be looking for, that's where the bargaining comes in. If you want us to go with you, you know, then we have to talk about it.
Well, then you got to look at the long-term benefit.
Now, I don't think we necessarily have to do this with the chief's positions. I think we can do that. No bargaining, just, you know, do it through town meeting.
Well, this would include-
Correct, but I think we should have a separate article for the chiefs. I do, because I think this one's going to crash and burn on the town meeting floor. I think we should be able to do the chief's one.
I could tell you, whichever way this one goes, the other one will go.
Okay. You're probably in more experience than I am.
Unless you, unless you tie it, one's Article One and one's Article 28, you know. Yeah, we have a secret ballot, everyone, and we're there for 14 nights.
This feeds right into the yellow one.
Yeah.
Correct.
Well.
So, maybe you don't want to eat the elephant all at once. Maybe you want to deal with the chiefs first.
Well, maybe you do. Maybe just have a public discussion about the whole thing and let the general public decide and see if there's enough interest in the community to, either way, if you want to do it.
I've raised my concerns and, you know, you guys.
No, no, it's far as, you know, what we talked about it last week or two weeks from Dallas, the discussion's going to be the same.
Yeah, and we don't have a lot of time between now and June 3rd to sit down with the unions who really want to sit down and have a discussion with them.
Why not? It's a discussion.
All right. I can, I'm, I-
We're all in fire negotiations. We started fire negotiations yesterday, so all we have to do is reengage on the police side.
Mr. Balconis, do you have an opinion?
We have a very ambitious agenda. That's my opinion.
Who's that mean?
I don't know.
It just means we have an ambitious agenda, given the timeframe that we have in front of us.
It depends on, how deeply engaged do you want to become?
I want to become as deeply engaged as possible to be successful at town meeting. And I don't know what that means yet. I know we're going to learn before we get there, because we don't know how they're going to react to it, but that's, that's the only answer I can give you.
I can tell you right now, they're going to react to it.
I, I can tell you that, too.
Okay.
That's why I think we need to, you know, I think this is important, I think it's maybe suited more for October town meeting.
I think we're rushing it.
And maybe between now, and we start the discussions right now associated with this.
Well, clearly, we're at least four weeks behind where we ought to be with the budget process as a result of the hiatus with the school and everything else. I wouldn't object to taking that offer there and getting some dialogue going and then determine whether or not you want to put it in an article in October town meeting, leave it like that, that's okay with me.
I agree.
We get other, we get bigger fishes to fry with the overall budget and not a lot of time-
To get things done.
To get things done and communicate it.
Great.
And, you know, maybe the first start is to, you know, to talk to our, our management team, the two of them, who are very different, and get an opinion from them associated with whether or not just to remove the chiefs from the civil services, step one. And also get an opinion of, from them as to, you know, how they view and get some input, so.
Who's the management team you're referring to?
Two chiefs.
Two chiefs.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So, I'm not against, I'm not against taking that off the table right now.
I think the, I think the cryptic discussion we've had this evening certainly opens the door to conjecture as to what we're talking about, and I think, I think we should, I think, I think we should remove, remove the two articles from the proposed warrant.
Both?
Both. Which one? What's the first one?
Not 28, right? I mean, I think 28 we should continue with, but I think-
Excuse me, yeah.
We, we need to establish who's taking the action to talk to them in advance, so.
Again, 28 is going to be a big bone of contention.
I think both.
That's fine.
You know, I think 28 is also going to be a big bone of contention, too.
Okay.
So, I think, I think we should take both of them off the table. I think we should instruct the administrator to sit with the, the two chiefs, then have the two chiefs initially communicate with the union representatives as to our intention to explore possibilities under the proposed articles and then potentially take a look at them at October town meeting and then set up a schedule to sit down and chat with them.
I'd like to make another recommendation, Jimmy. That town administrator, after June town meeting, to reach out to the surrounding communities that have been successful at doing this, to just get some feedback, lessons learned, and in touch with the ones that are in the process of going through it for the same reasons.
Makes sense.
Okay, good. Yeah, I don't know anyone that has 28. It's the first time in 30 years that I've seen has Article 28.
I'm really talking about 29. I agree with you on 28.
28.
That's a tough one. I think we're on our own on that one. I'm just really talking about 29.
I agree.
Next.
Temporary moratorium medical marijuana treatment centers, an article that's been sued by the community fighting commission.
The CPC is requesting it.
They're on board with it. This is, this is their article. And this is the only way to do it, is to request a temporary moratorium. I'm sure you've seen in the papers, the other communities that had an outright ban failed.
Right. Yep, this is what everybody's doing.
You know, we, what I was thinking is that, you know, if you can't stop, I don't disagree with the moratorium, but we did this with the-
Delta Entertainment.
It's going to the same room. It's going to the same room, that's what you're going to have to do, you're going to spot zone it.
Yeah, so, you know, maybe, and maybe it's not for this meeting, because the CPC's going to get involved with it, but, you know, maybe they ought to be proposing something like that in October as a, you know, as, as coverage in case, you know, one moratorium doesn't occur and two, the state, you know, continues to move forward with what was voted.
Probably the state, the state hasn't enacted all the regulations yet, so they're behind. So, that's why most communities are doing this, and moratoriums, there are all the regulations in place, and then communities can decide which route they want to go, just open it up, spot zone it.
Yeah, so, you know, I think before anybody attempts to do anything, you ought to at least do the zoning.
All right, good.
Next.
Article except General Law, Chapter 41, Section 110A, says that the town corpse office, for the purposes of dealing with special elections and voter registrations, that any deadline that falls on a Saturday for voter registration would revert to the prior Friday. And this description that provides what, what the intent of the article is. Then lastly, Article 32 is, this is citizen petition concerning installation of a fire hydrant and water main on Summit Road.
Okay.
Up off of-
Central Street.
Off the central, okay. Up on the left if you're coming up on 62.
And this is, there's no water main.
Why is none there now?
They have wells, the people that live up there.
I don't think so.
Who sponsored this article?
Citizen petition.
Oh, hello.
So, when we have the warrant article informational hearing, they'll be invited in.
Mark, has Mark weighed in on this?
No, he hasn't, but he'll be present for next week. Two weeks from now is the, I'm sorry, the meeting on the 22nd is the water informational hearing, so both Mark and Mr. Carnavale will be present at that meeting. We can address this issue along with the Petrosino agreement, the intent of that, so they'll be present at the next meeting.
If I might make a suggestion, that we reach out to the petitioners and make our water department available to them, so they can quantify what they're asking for, or know what they, know what they're asking for, and they can quantify.
Cost.
Their cost, so when they come in, they could have a number, know what it is, be informed, so that when we have the informational hearing, everybody's informed. So, just inviting you to sit down with, with Mark and whoever else down on your head to quantify what the cost is going to be ahead of time. General, just one of the, the last couple of weeks, one of the local restaurants, pouring establishments, asked if we had allowed any, all of our liquor licenses, as it turns out, Karen, thanks to Karen and Jackie, I did a little research, all of our liquor licenses, pouring licenses, for Sunday hours, noon time forward. In other communities, they've accepted a mass general law, and they don't have the chapter and verse, which allows it to open at 11:00. These would be for like brunch, you know, and they serve their mimosas and their Bloody Marys and stuff like that at 11:00 a.m. It only moves it back to 11:00 a.m., it doesn't start at nine in the morning, or 6:00 a.m. But someone approached, you know, can I get one of those, because we're thinking about, you know, whether it be Mother's Day, or do, do, have a Sunday brunch, someone wants to have a mimosa or something like that, we can't serve it until noon time, you know. As it turns out, thanks to Karen and Jackie, they did some research, we would have to accept a mass general law such as such and so, as other communities have, to enable us as a board to modify people's license or issue licenses, which will allow us an 11 o'clock opening, which personally, I'm not too opposed to, but I don't know whether they have it. I didn't know what the feeling on the board is, but if we do want to do it, we would need another article to accept it, according to the ABCC. Once it's accepted, then we can issue licenses.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
I don't have an issue with that.
You know, to me, I'm just looking to even the playing, playing field for local business establishments to offer services that other communities have already adopted. Granted, a lot of the larger urban communities, but still, we have some pretty good restaurants that, you know, they're all well-run, all well-managed, and just something that we may want to provide an opportunity for our local establishments, restaurants, to offer something a little bit more than what we're allowing them to do right now. If the consensus is to do it, I would ask them maybe reserve a spot with the administration and just look into it. Karen's pretty familiar with it right now.
Yeah, I've already put it on here, isn't it?
That's a fair, but again, I just throw it out there.
Sure.
Get the consensus is, find if it's not.
Okay with me.
Contensus, if we're adding, based upon the discussion with Mr. Hinkston this evening, I think we need to add two others. One to remove the, we send the $1 million school feasibility study warrant article, that was passed back a couple of years ago, and then also we need to adopt a new language of General Law, is Chapter 32B, Section 20.
I'm not sure this particular article is best suited for June town meeting or October town meeting, but I brought this up at previous meetings regarding Swan Pond and selling the property at Swan Pond. I think we owe it to the taxpayers to try to find some means of collecting some cash that we desperately need right now, and I'd like to put that on the table, and if it's June town meeting, then I'm all for it.
I think we're going to wait till October, where we can put together details of what it is we're planning. Having you say Swan Pond, what does that mean?
Well, the town own land.
I think you got to have meets and balances.
You're talking about some significant impact on the neighborhood up there, you're talking about adding single-family homes possibly, or even cluster developments, you know, and some certain costs associated with those two, so.
We had some preliminary discussions last Friday with the financial planning team regarding this issue.
Okay.
And what came out of that, we're going to have further discussions, but also the thought process was to identify a particular area up there and also to get a says value of what we could potentially receive if a certain parcel, certain piece of that parcel was sold out, so.
Well, I mean, I know everybody's busy, I'm willing to take, do the legwork, if it's not ready, get it ready for June town meeting, to do it for October town meeting, whatever it takes, I'm willing to do it, because I think it's worthy of the research and-
I agree. I just don't think it's ready for June.
I think that there's enough on the plate-
Okay.
-to deal with this. I don't disagree with doing that research and coming up and determining the implications. And October town meeting is, you know, only, it's not a half a year away.
Oh, I know, no, it's right around the corner, so.
It comes up quickly.
Well, that's why I prefaced in the start of it, it could be the June, October, I just want to make sure that, you know, I just want to get a census from the board, a sense of the board if you're, if you're mine.
Well, that we said we'd look at it, and I think, you know, to do, to do an appropriate analysis of what's available and, you know, what it might be worth, and you still got to do an impact.
So, Mr. Balconis, what help do you need from us to?
We've already put the wheels in motion, Selectman Crisco, because we've, we've gone through and identified parcels up there that are not under conservation ownership, and I've contacted the assessing manager, and I've asked her to establish what she feels is good faith estimate of the value of those properties. I'm not looking for an assessed valuation, that's a number that you can pull off of a property tax card, but, but a good faith estimate of what the valuation is, and I've asked her to get that information to me through the two weeks. So, I think that that's a good starting point, is to actually look at the parcels and ascertain what at least an estimated value would be.
Thank you, that's fantastic.
I think, I think the planning commission, the planning administrator needs to be involved in the process, as well as maybe LUC.
Yeah, most likely.
To me, you know, the planning administrator, CPC, more under their purview, perhaps it would be our land, but under our control.
Yep, Mr. Fode's the liaison, so I'm sure you'll have some kind of, give him a heads up, what we're thinking.
Ask them to take a look at, and put it on there, on their plate.
Yeah.
Let's see what they have.
That's the only other one I had, that was it.
Anything else related to the warrant, Mr. Balconis?
No, sir.
If you'd move to town administrator's report.
I mentioned earlier in the calendar that I'm tentatively looking at a special board meeting dealing with the budget hearing, and I'm asking you to consider a meeting on the 29th or sometime that week.
There isn't, there isn't a report in here, is there?
No, no.
Okay.
No, this, this is an item that I just brought up because it was in the calendar, and it's important to try to nail down what the date of the budget hearing is going to be.
It works for me, the 29th, though.
29th is fine. All Bob and Michael are going to do is rest up to the next day.
What are we doing, oh, that's right. That's fine, it may be my last meeting.
Mr. Blank wins.
I just want to plug it to my camera.
Be a 7:00 o'clock meeting?
Seven.
Seven. Seven.
I want to just address two items in my report, both of them are pretty substantial. The first has to do with the curbside solid waste collection and recycling contract, which is up on June thirtieth of this year. There was a request for proposals that was issued, and the results are included in the documents that are in your packet. There were a number of bids that were received. Amongst those bids, they ranged in prices between, excuse me, between.
Four point two million?
The high end, no, that's actually not it, give me a second. Bids range, give me a second, on the low end of two million, seven hundred fifty-two thousand, which is inclusive of all services, and on the high end, they ranged upwards of four million, four hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. There are a total of six firms that submitted proposals to us. As a result of those six firms, it was narrowed down to three. Interviews were conducted with JRM, who's the existing caller, Northside Cottage, and with Allied Waste Systems. We met with each of those firms, we asked them to demonstrate what their expertise was and what their ability was to service the town of North Reading. As a result of that, that process, it was identified that JRM would provide us with the best level of service at the least cost. The cost that they came in, it was two million, seven hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars, which is a five-year contract with July one, two thousand and fourteen, and expiring June thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen. As a result of that exercise, I would like to award a contract to JRM for five years going forward. I feel that their, their plan of service and their ability to serve the community is good, their track record in the community is good, they've been responsive. Today, they were, you know, I don't know if you had an opportunity, the winds were quite heavy, there were trash barrels here, there, and everywhere around the community. I received some calls, and I saw some trash barrels around myself on Central Street when I was driving back to the office. I called them, they got immediate word out to their, to their crew to make sure that they used care, and that type of service, I think, is really good for the community. I, I would recommend, and I will recommend, that we proceed with awarding a contract to JRM, as included in your package.
Greg, could you explain something to me? There seems to be, there's a memo with numbers on it, dated March fourteenth, and then there's one.
January.
January, none of these numbers match what you stated for JRM or the range, so.
Yeah, the J, if you, if you look at the final trash recycling quotes, it's a document to spreadsheet three thirteen, two thousand and thirteen.
Okay. All right, so you're reading it off of the spreadsheet and not the memorandums that.
Well, the J, the JRM is two million, seven seventy-seven, four eighty-five, that matches the memo and the spreadsheet match totally.
Yeah, there is, on page four of that document, it does have, it in writing, keep going, one more, and there it is.
That, that matches the.
That matches the spreadsheet.
Matches the March fourteenth memo.
That's right.
Which is different from.
Correct.
January memo, I don't know what January memo was.
January eleventh memo, too, those same numbers.
No, no, they're different.
It's like twenty-five thousand dollars. Four eighty-five.
Yeah.
Is that the right number, or is it the?
The JRM number in the, in the January memo is two million, seven hundred fifty-two, four eighty-five.
Is that the?
The correct, nope, the correct number for JRM is two million, seven seventy-seven, four eighty-five.
All right, okay.
Okay, so I'm going to delete those other.
So what, what generated the two different sets of numbers? Was there a change in the request for a bid?
No, what we did was we sat down, we sat down with them, the original request that would have been put out back in November, December of last year was quite general, and then once that request was submitted, we had, they had an opportunity to sit down with the DPW staff, and as a result of that, the proposals were updated, and the numbers that got submitted on March thirteenth are reflective of what the town's request for services are for solid waste collection.
So after going back and negotiating with it, it's twenty-five thousand dollars more?
That's right.
Request for information, so discussions.
That's right.
I know, I've done it for twenty-something years, I've never seen it go up, I usually see them go down. After you pick a vendor, you negotiate a price.
Costs are fair, if you look at how the JRM cost compares to the other vendors, I feel that the cost is, is a good cost.
Mr. Chair? Greg, for solid waste, we pay a separate tipping fee.
We do.
What about recycling, is that all-inclusive?
Yes, it is. So there's no additional fee for recycling?
And do we get anything back for each, a certain?
No.
So you don't put anything in your, in the contract that if paper gets up to a certain amount of money per time?
Really? No.
Mr. Fode, are you suggesting that something we should consider?
No, I don't know, I don't know how the, I don't know how the RFP was written, so I don't know if that number's based on, but a lot of communities have thresholds, that if you reach a certain amount, our, our paper and cardboard gets to a certain dollar. Anything over that, you would split at a certain percentage?
Our goal was to try to lock in the cost at the lowest rate possible, and in that regard, I think we've achieved that with JRM. We had some discussions with, with Allied about going to an automated system. That came out of the fact that we conducted interviews, as a result of those interviews, Allied came back to us and talked about an automated system. We asked them to submit some proposal with what those costs would be, and that's reflected in the spreadsheet that you see dated March thirteenth, with the costs ranging between three point two million and three point four millions. Does everyone understand what the automated piece is?
Mm-hmm.
We think it's a good, a good plan and a good program, but I don't feel that we're quite, quite there yet.
Greg, on that, three, three thirteen, two thousand and three spreadsheet, on the right-hand side, it says JRM existing, it has two years?
Yes.
So on, on everything, it has two years. So are you, are you saying that you're going, you went out early? Is it two years existing on their contract, and you're going out early to extend it to five years, is that why?
Give me a second. I see, I see what you're looking at, I just need to collect my, my thoughts here for a second. Could we just move along with the conversation, and I'll, and I'll look it up, rather than, give me, give me a chance to just check it.
I don't think there's anything else to talk about. I'll go to the restroom then.
My recollection is that there was, there was an option, so the town had an option to, there was a five-year contract with JRM, there was a two-year option that the town had a right to exercise, that included costs in them that are depicted here, the three hundred twenty-seven and the three hundred thirty-seven thousand for curbside collection, and on the recycling side, five hundred forty-one thousand and five hundred fifty-eight thousand. However, what we decided to do is, rather than exercising those options, we decided to go out and conduct a procurement at this time for the full five-year cycle.
Right, but you're talking, by doing that, your first two years are going to cost you, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand, almost twenty, fifteen thousand more.
Greg, a little bit more on the recycling.
Typically, when you, typically when you extend it, you're getting, your current two years, you get a better deal in your current two years, because you're giving them security of five years. Because what they got to do is, they have to, they're going to probably have to procure vehicles, and, and by doing so, having a five-year contract is more advantageous for them than a two-year contract. So I can't understand why would, why the numbers would go up as opposed to down for the existing two years.
Greg, can you explain to me? You have a JRM, on that same spreadsheet, you got a JRM column on the left, down towards the bottom, you have total FY fourteen through eighteen, that total runs out to that two point seven million dollar number, but then you go to the far right, and you have JRM ten-year?
Yes.
That number is two point six eight seven, and you show in a delta, and I think the delta is, is the delta between the two point six and the two point seven of a minus eighty-nine nine? So I read this to be, that's, that's their new contract number, that's the.
No, the, the column, right-hand column was JRM came in outside of the scope of the agreement and proposed a ten-year contract. So the cost that you see in the right-hand column, that total two million, six hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, represents the costs of years six through ten, which we are not interested in going with a ten-year contract with JRM at this time.
That makes no sense, you got five years here, that total two point six million.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's years, that's years six through ten.
Okay, so why wouldn't we want to do that? Because we'd save ninety thousand dollars?
Because I think what the town wishes to do is consider what options are available in five years, I think.
But we're doing that, it looks like we're doing that anyhow.
No. Two point seven million dollars?
It's the same years, FY fourteen through.
No, I know, I know, it's just how the spreadsheet is set up.
This is the first five years, these are the second five years.
It's just how the spreadsheet is set up.
Five, that would be the cost of the second five.
Yeah, thanks, thank you, Selectman Fode, it's just how the spreadsheet is set up.
But why is it showing a delta?
Yeah, how are you saving ninety thousand dollars, you're saving eighty-nine thousand dollars if you go to a ten-year, how is that?
We're not recommending a ten-year, we're recommending.
No, no, I know, what he's trying to say is, if you, if you subtract, the delta you have there is a negative eighty-nine thousand, nine eighty-five, and that's based on, what you're doing is you take, you're subtracting the second five years from the first five years.
I see it.
But how, why, why would you do that?
I'm not saying that it's right, I'm saying that the, it's, it's just a matter of how it carried on the spreadsheet.
I'd rather given you a lower price if you, on a ten-year basis.
That's right.
So I, again, I didn't, mine didn't get answered, because typically when you, if you have two current years existing, and you've, and you've negotiated to extend three additional years, you're usually getting a better deal, not a, it's usually not costing you money, you're usually getting a better deal.
These are the, the numbers that came in, and these are the numbers that aren't.
And you might want to consider just going with the two years and not extending to three five.
Right, and then.
And then talking to someone else in three years.
Greg, who put this spreadsheet in?
This was put together by a Department of Public Works. I feel very confident and very comfortable that the five-year program serves this town well, and I'm comfortable in proposing to the board that we enter into a five-year agreement with JRM for the years that are here. I fear that if we go ahead and we exercise the option on the two-year agreement, then this community will be, will be faced with additional costs when it puts us back out to bid in another two years.
I understand what you're, I understand what you're saying, is basically what you're saying is that.
I'd rather stabilize the cost going forward.
That's right. Right, if we went out to bid, we're going to get a higher cost for the, I, I buy that.
I mean, just look at the.
My problem is, I can't understand a stupid spreadsheet.
Yeah.
It's poorly done.
It is poorly done, and that's why I'm saying that if you look at that right-hand column, that eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars has no relevancy to anything that's here. You don't compare the first five years to the second five years. That's all it's trying to do.
Okay, so then FY fourteen, the five hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred thousand, FY fourteen, in the far left corner, right?
Yes, sir.
A far left column.
Yes, sir.
That's what we're paying, that would be what we'd pay for the first year if we signed this contract.
That's right.
What is, what would it be if we don't sign this contract and stick with the existing one, what would be the?
Five hundred forty-one thousand dollars.
Five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars.
That's right.
And then five fifty-eight the second.
Right, but I have to agree with Mr. Fode on this, it, doesn't it just seem a little quirky that you would pay more for something, you already have a contract, that you'd pay less?
No, because they're basing the contract on today's pricing, right? So if you, if you continue on the existing contract, right, and then you go out to bid in FY sixteen, I guess, for the numbers, there's a high probability that those numbers are going to be much higher, so.
All right, it's a risk we take.
Yeah.
Okay.
And looking at the other bids.
But I'm going to go, I'm going to go bond some money now, because I'm getting a lower rate, right?
But again, I've just, I negotiated, and then I had a three-year, I had a three-year contract. I had a three-year contract, and then right after signing the three-year contract, within less than six months, the contractor came back to me and says, I want to spread this out, I want to go five years. And I said, well, you got, tell them what you're looking to do, and he came down every year for five years. It was cheaper, my, my, the three years that I already negotiated and signed a contract with, came down, because I gave him stability for five years. He has to buy trucks, and he was able to spread the cost of those trucks over five years, as opposed to three years. So I, I would not, I would not sign again for a higher number.
I'm looking at it, maybe the same way Greg is a little bit here, we have our current vendor, who's looking for stability, but in, looking comparison to the other, other bidders, significantly lower, even going five years out. And what he's done is, he's taken the, the first two years, and in year two, actually getting a decrease from what our current contract is, you're only, what, fifteen, fifteen-hundred bucks more than year one, you're sixteen thousand dollars less, fifteen-five less in year two, and then year three is, is what, is what year two would be.
More in year two. It's five forty-two is what they're proposing now.
It would be five fifty-eight if we stick with them.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Right, so if you stay with them.
Yeah, you're right.
You're going to spend more in the next two years. You're going to spend more in the next two years, and what they're doing is, is in year three, giving you the year two price that we're looking at if we don't.
For the first year.
For the, for the, for the next two years after that, you're stabilizing the prices of what you would be at next year. So over four years, you're saving a significant amount of money, and again, that's the stability and the ability to go out. Just, all the reasons you were talking about before, and then the final, final year of the contract.
I didn't see this number that well, to be honest with you, that's.
Yeah, that's the five fifty-eight, five fifty-eight is next year's number.
I thought, I was reading five thirty.
Right.
Okay, it looks to me, I, I was reading five thirty something, that's what it was.
Okay, no, it's five fifty-eight. And what they're doing is going to the five five eight number, for the following two years, four and five. Looks like a pretty good deal to me.
It's a good deal.
Okay, let's move on, it's eleven thirty.
Good deal.
All right, Greg, you made the point, I have a right to ask a question, though.
No, 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 no.
I don't, I don't like, I'm feeling, I'm feeling you're being, I'm being bullied by you telling me it's a good deal.
No, 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 so, no, I agree, I thank you, thank you, thank you, I'm sorry.
What's next, what do we got?
Any further questions on the trash?
Did you guys make a decision?
Board members?
No, Steve was, pointed out that I was reading one number wrong, because I couldn't see it all that well. Thank you.
In other words, it's going the way it's being proposed is a good deal.
The gap wasn't as, as significant as I had.
Good.
Are you looking for something from us, the yard unit?
No, I just wanted to simply acknowledge that when we have a contract of this size, what my intentions were.
I'm sorry?
I simply wanted to announce to the board what my intentions were, and get feedback from you in terms of whether you felt that was the right direction.
Okay.
How's the board feeling?
Looks good to me.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Consensus is, everyone's fine.
Now that we understand it.
Greg, I think that's the issue, the way it was, this spreadsheet. Yeah, Greg, I think that's the issue, the way it was, this spreadsheet was not clear.
I agree. I agree. We had a discussion with the financial planning team on Friday, and as a result of that discussion, there were some changes made to the revenue and expense plan that I wanted to review in summary with the board this evening. And I wanted to just try to explain what those changes were that were discussed with the, the committee on Friday. And so if you could just turn to the item that I had in my packet, 2014 budget.
Greg, can I just stop you there? I just wanna be clear. This is what you and Liz had come in and proposed to the financial planning team, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
No changes. So the, the elements of the, the budget are based upon the sixty-seven, thirty-three percent split on revenues between the town and the schools. And as a result of some discussions that the finance director and I had, we had recommended several other actions that are shown here on the, on the budget sheet, and that is to allocate the veterans' benefits in their entirety to offset the municipal budget.
I can see that, well, apparently, so I'm asking.
To also utilize the 265,000 dollars in ambulance revenues as a direct offset against the municipal budgets. And those are really the two major changes in terms of the distribution split between the town and the schools that we're looking at. Now, the reason why is that we feel as though that these are major cost centers associated with the municipal government operation. We're trying to balance the budget, and we're trying to be able to fund municipal services, and these are our recommendations in order to try to do that.
And for further explanation, for, I didn't understand this previously, that these two items were subject to the split, pre, previously is, they were subject, subject to the split between school and town, correct?
That's right.
Ambulance revenue?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah, I didn't, I had no idea, really.
Yes.
I wasn't, I was under pressure, but...
Because they were considered local receipts.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but I thought we had an agreement that we were gonna use that money to pay off the purchase of the new ambulance.
We have retained an amount, a, a, a balance in the ambulance account for the purposes of that, but when we purchased the ambulance the last time, that ambulance is being paid for with general fund revenues. So if we look at debt service, it's being paid through general revenues.
But we used to have, we used to have an ambulance reserve fund to fund the purchase of new ambulances.
There was a time where we actually paid cash for the purchase of the new ambulance, but what we've done is, over a period of time, we've, we've allocated additional monies from this ambulance reserve account to offset operating costs. And as a result, the town doesn't have the financial ability to pay for the ambulance from the reserve account to the extent it did in the past.
So we need to get back to that, since we're generating more revenue.
Yes.
And, yeah, the veterans' benefits, that's, I'm sure what you explained that to the financial planning team with the...
Well, when the num, when the number was, when the number was small, the sixty-seven, thirty-three split wasn't really a big deal.
Right.
But now that we're looking at a benefit number in excess of 300,000 dollars, it's a big deal.
Mm-hmm. And the reaction from the financial planning team?
I think there's, the committee was surprised. I think that there was, you know, just kinda reading it, I think that there was an understanding that those monies would continue to be split on a sixty-seven, thirty-three percent basis. And as those numbers grew, the split would continue.
I'm not sure I viewed it quite that way. I don't, I don't think the financial planning team meeting ever looked at those numbers that way at all. Okay, I think Greg is right in taking a look at this because these, these funds are directly for...
Right.
Are being applied to town-related things. The issue with the financial planning team meeting was that a couple of weeks before, there were a different set of numbers, and it was kind of a surprise to everybody.
The school committee worked on their budget based upon those numbers from two weeks ago, and they got to a point where they were comfortable, and this changes, changes things for them.
Yeah, it's a 300,000 dollar swing.
It's a 275,000 dollar loss, isn't it?
Right, that was rounding, 300,000 bucks, yeah.
So we had asked at the financial planning team to, for Greg and Liz to go back and take a look at, can we find some additional money to put some of it back? On the right through, I wish, find 200,000 dollars.
It seemed like, the sentiment was, 200,000 dollars was found, put over to the school side, they can make things work. So that's what we'll hope to accomplish on Thursday.
What, what is water indirect cost?
Yeah, I, same thing.
So the water department, all of our enterprise funds pay in indirect cost. That's the cost of town government providing health insurance, general liability insurance, accounting, and so forth. So as those indirect costs, those indirect costs previously were split again on the sixty-seven, thirty-three percent basis with schools. We're saying that we're gonna grandfather the split that exists at this time, but any of the new monies going forward, we're gonna allocate 100% of the incremental increase to the town side of the budget. And that's what the difference is in the, the number that's shown here, is allocating all of that amount toward the municipal budget.
So it's small today?
It's, it's, uh... Eighteen thousand and fifty-nine dollars.
Small.
That's the increase. That's the increase. The remaining portion would still be subject to the split.
Steve, a couple of weeks ago, I filled the school department. One of the reasons why we grew from sixty to sixty-seven percent on the split was related to their significant growth in population through those years. And that has leveled off. In fact, it's come down a little bit now, albeit, you know, it's spread over a number of classrooms, and therefore, the gain has been smaller class sizes and not necessarily a reduction in staff. But, you know, it's something they had to think about. But if you look at what their level funding budget was, their level funded budget was over a million dollars, and they went into their offsets, which had never been shared with the town. And they actually trimmed down their reserves to bring that number down, it was 400 and something thousand dollars, of which it was a balanced budget two weeks ago, and it turned into a non-balanced budget as a result of the steps Greg did to kind of balance out the town side, which was really lopsided. It was 300,000 dollars negative for the town and 400 and something plus for the school, based on previous forms. So we have some work to do, which will get done next meeting, the meeting after, and we'll get the town meeting with, you know, balanced budgets on both sides, with some bill tightening and sacrifice, and hope for a better year next year. And, you know, what's still out there is, we don't know what the state is gonna do. But they gotta stop giving us mandates.
I mean, close to the end, maybe.
No work commercials?
No.
Uh, the, good news. Health insurance increases at 3%.
And you budgeted seven?
Originally budgeted five, we went to seven. We backed down to three. If you kind of follow what's going on, Maya, who we previously insured with, announced at the MMA annual meeting back in January, that their average rate increase would be in the range of 6.2%. So we did much better than other municipalities that remained within Maya. And we were able to get Harvard Pilgrim to agree to a lower amount. This amount is consistent with what, if you look at what the rate of medical inflation is, that's exactly this amount. So, any new mandates that come as, come as a result of either the state or the federal government passing along costs to the health insurer are not reflected in this. This is strictly a rate of inflation cost that we're seeing here. And I think it's a good and attractive deal for the town. That's the good news.
Good news.
That's, uh, that's the good news, but the, the other bit of good news on the, on that budget is, we, we now base that increase off of what our anticipated actual costs for this year will be. So no longer do we take the budget and simply apply 3%, 3% to it. We simply, we look at what our costs are gonna be for 12 months, which are, we're running below our run rate for this year. So it'll be the fact that the budget will not increase at all for health insurance going forward. Which is a long ways from the 16% increases that we're seeing not too long ago.
That's good news.
It is good news. It's positive news. There's some other assumptions that are here. The, the one that I pointed out earlier, there's 181,000 with the longevity benefit. I'm proposing that we take it from non-recurring revenues. It's the final year of the benefit in 2014, not 2014, but 2014. Last year for the COPS fast payment, 33,897. The proposal is to pay for that from non-recurring revenues. Again, 2000, 2014 is the final year for the repayment to the U.S. Department of Justice. I'm using 59,000 from the solid waste stabilization fund against the DPW budget. That doesn't affect the schools in any way, nor did the other two items that I mentioned affect the schools in any way. We talked about the water indirect cost and the insurance.
Good news, almost done.
Mr. Fode?
No, tied. Thank you.
Hold in new business.
First and foremost, this is our first meeting since special time, any special election, and I just want to thank everybody for paying attention, really, paying attention and doing their homework and, and recognizing that the best option we had is the one that was exercised. And I thought it was thoughtful, I wish to, you know, more people would, you know, would participate it, but I don't think the results would have changed. And, again, I think it's heartening that we're gonna get a project that's gonna be complete, and one that we can be proud of, and unfortunately, we were placed into that situation, circumstances beyond our control, but I think the community did come together and rallied together to come to the right conclusion. You know, to the secondary school building committee, school committees, finance committee, this board, you know, it wasn't easy. And, but, thank goodness that the results are what they are, because it really would have been catastrophic, had it gone the other way. So I just wanna thank the public for coming out, for participating, for paying attention and coming to what I think was, was the right conclusion. Secondly, I'd just like to acknowledge the passing of Mr. Gordon Mills, who's a longtime member of the community and longtime, I'll call firefighter, almost 50 years with the department. Born and raised in this community and passed away this past week, and condolences to, to his family. And thank you very much for your services to the community.
Is that what the drabings on the fighter pilot was last week?
Yes.
We're trying to figure that out.
Yeah, Gordon Mills, yeah. And then, Bob and Mike? Congratulations so far, this is good. We'll see how the end results are, but, you know, nice, easy election season for you guys. Yeah, good for you, well deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fode? Just repeat Steve Simon on the schools. We're very fortunate to get that passed, and I just hope that the community can work towards rebuilding any differences we had over the last six months, and let's get this project finished and have a great recovery. So, that's it for Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ms. Herry?
Well, ditto on, on the school, and thanks to Jeff Simons and his activity to help get the vote up. The building committee, Sean started off by reminding our architect and OPM Gilbain that the fact that they've got the money doesn't mean that we expect it all to be spent. And I delivered the same message, and, you know, I think that diligence has to be done by the building committee to keep careful eye on that. If you don't know, Gilbain was given an additional amount of contingency to deal with the 90% numbers. When the bids come in and they're law by that contingency amount, Sean and I both feel the same way, is that that should come right back to the town. In other words, it's money that's not needed.
You won't borrow.
Not to take all the contingency away, because, you know, they can, the original contingency was based on 100%. But I think that's important, and I think, you know, there ought to be real active scrutiny of everything that's going on. They have to save as much money, in addition to looking at town land and other grants and other things. That's another area where now all the hurdles are down and the switches are on go, but that doesn't mean spend every single penny. And that's all I have.
Just in relation to that, now, the role of the project manager at this point is what in relation to the architect and, and Gilbain and the spending? I mean, are they truly our agents? Are they our feet in the ground?
My, my reaction to that is, just what I said.
I know, but I'm asking, and, you know, their role is, is to be our advocates, watch those dollars and...
That is the role.
Play that role that Bob just explained.
That's right. There will be a meeting just with them to discuss those issues in the near future.
Good, okay.
They're on notice.
Right, because, you know, to, to me, if the confidence level isn't there, we have a contingency, we should maybe consider contracting someone to be there on the ground, look at the floodings, check everything out. But, I'm sure you've thought about that.
You're the easiest one to replace.
Right. Yep.
True. Mr. Persky?
Yeah, just two things, and continuing with a little bit of the school stuff, 'cause I, I just wanna mention, not that anyone's really listening, like 10 minutes to go until we get to tomorrow. It was a bittersweet accomplishment, and I've been receiving the phone calls, and I'm sure some of you have, and this is really hurting. And it has divided the town, and it's unfortunate, and I hope that we can get there. But from a big pitch perspective, this is in the best interest of the town. We couldn't let that school be completed the way it would have if we didn't get the funds. But my phone is always available, my door is always open to all those in town who really are struggling. I'm, I'm here to listen, I'm not sure I can help in all cases, but in several of the cases...
Greg, I have to give a lot of credit to the finance department. They, every call I get with, you know, where we have issues, we've been able to give some kind of guidance and availabilities of things that we actually have in place on a lot of cases with exemptions and things like that for the elderly and the disability, disabled, and some of those that are just needing a tax relief. We're trying our best to give them some guidance. So I want the town to know that we are very sensitive to the impact that this has had on them. Everybody on this board, I know you've all said it in previous meetings, and that continues. The last thing I have is really for you, Greg. I, I really am confused on an email you had sent out last week. You know, we created an economic development team, and Mr. Delaney is the liaison from the board. I know we really haven't been able to get that off the ground very quickly since we've had some issues over in the planning department, but it seems like now you have a separate committee that has a separate mission, and I, I'm just really confused, and I don't... committee that has a separate mission, and I'm just really confused, and I don't think it's in the best interest of the town if we have a committee that is, what you explained to me in an email, was being spearheaded by our water department director. And I just, I'd like to just have a quick conversation, but I know it's late, but it is very concerning, and I know there's a meeting coming up, I believe tomorrow, with this committee.
Just so you know, that's been in place before he came.
It's a development team.
It's not new.
That was put together before Greg got here. The development team was put together to help streamline the permitting process for people who want to commit and go into commercial properties and development teams, so they can sit one place at town hall with all the parties that may be involved in the permitting process to flush out all the issues, see what they're gonna be confronting in relation to hearings, what's gonna be required for the permitting process, and it's worked very well.
I've never heard of it.
It's been...
It's a staff committee.
It's a staff committee so that someone has a plan to come in, and, you know, what do I have to do, where do I go? Instead of going from office to office and piecemealing it, they put together the development team, come, sit down, meet with these people, and say, "Okay, what is your plan? Lay it out. This is what's gonna be expected of you in order to get through the permitting process here at town hall in order to expedite it." They formed a development team. It's worked very well.
No one's ever explained it, so thank you for explaining it.
Very different, the economic development.
Yeah, very different. And that was the exchange of the email, it was related to economic development, so...
This is a reactionary thing to develop and looking for the town.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Just briefly, I echo the comments of all my fellow board members regarding special time meeting, special election. I thank the support of my colleagues here, it was tremendous support from the finance committee, the other members of the secondary school building committee, members of the general public, Ozzy Bailey, Jeff Simons, and I'm happy that the community paid attention, listened, and did what I think was the right thing.
Sleeping a little better? Got a couple of good nights' sleep, finally?
I did, I did. I was able to get back to making a living a little bit, too, so that was good. But a special thank you goes out to, it was mentioned earlier this evening, to Barbara Stantz and her staff in terms of how she dealt with town meeting and the paper ballot, and followed up very quickly with being ready and able to go with the election four days later, so special thank you to her and her staff. Updates on the project itself. People may have heard, we had a minor spill up there, that's no issue of contamination. It was a waterproofing issue. If anyone has heard about it, you can contact me, I can explain it in more detail. It was less than a five-gallon spill last, occurred on Monday, discovered on Tuesday, early Tuesday morning. Gilbain hired a professional team to come out, DEB came out, the fire department came out. It was contained, rectified, and I got an update late this afternoon, as I was coming here, that the report back from the professional environmental team that was hired by Gilbain, and I'll also say, the cost associated with the cleanup is all borne by the waterproofing company and/or their insurance company, so no expense from the town side. The update I got, the reports have come back, that there's no issue that remains up there. The bids for all items will begin except for the flooring this Thursday, and I believe they'll be open here, one o'clock, Greg?
One o'clock.
One o'clock, I believe, right in this room. So that's exciting, and also, people should be aware, the construction related to the access road is going to begin at the end of this week, first part of next week, so there's limited access to the, what's considered to be the main entrance side of the high school, so caution people who are going to the high school. It'll be directed to the opposite side of the high school. Just be aware that that's going to begin. Major portion of that will be done during school vacation, and it'll continue for a few months thereafter, and that's all I have. Thank you. Do we have an executive session?
No.
No. We contain a motion.
So moved.
I said we would, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.